All right, we ready? Guys? I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 6:32 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Mayor Kouyas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by myself if everyone can please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Please always look out for the blessings of Tarpon Springs as we all come together to make decisions in the best interest for everyone. Please keep us blessed, watch over all of us, and thankful for this opportunity for all of us to come together as one to talk about our great city. Thank you. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the earth and the
We have two announcements. Item 17, ratification of Tabitha Atkins as Human Resources Director, has been added to tonight's agenda. And item 18, St. Nicholas Resurrection Service Orthodox Easter, has been withdrawn. There has been a communication between the applicant and city staff for this year and moving forward as well. So first, we will begin with the First Proclamation of the Day, which is Greek Independence Day Parade. Is Ms. Georgia Floropoulos here? We don't have our microphone today.
That's right. So what we're gonna do?
And first, I do want to say, I don't care what side of the political aisle anyone is on. We did have President Trump at the Greek Independence Day Proclamation in Washington, DC, did recognize our beautiful city of Tarpon Springs when he said from Philadelphia to the world famous Tarpon Springs. And yes, you know about Tarpon Springs, Florida, so I just want to say it's an honor for our city to be recognized by the President at this time. So thank you. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas March 25th, 2025 marks the 204th anniversary of the start of the Greek War of Independence where the Greeks rose up for the cause of freedom and declared their independence from the Ottoman Empire. And whereas we honor the legacy of these courageous Greek women and men, and we dedicate ourselves to the cause of liberty and democracy for all. And whereas Greek Independence Day is celebrated by Greeks around the world with their public gatherings and parades in the United States where Greeks have made their homes. And whereas today and every day, we celebrate the unbreakable bonds of friendship shared by the United States and the Hellenic Republic and continue to draw strength from the ideas put forth and the examples set by our two countries. And whereas Sunday, March 23rd, 2025, has been chosen for the Greek Independence Day Parade in the City of Tarpon Springs. And whereas this year marks the 37th year anniversary of the organized celebration and parade between the City of Tarpon Springs and the Greek Independence Day Parade Committee. And whereas Greek immigrants have celebrated Greek Independence Day in Tarpon Springs since the early 1900s with parades and gatherings. Now therefore, I, Panayotis Kouyas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2025 as the 204th anniversary of Greek Independence Day. Here you go, Ms. Floropoulos. Would you like to say a few words?
On behalf of the Greek Independence Day Committee, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to Mayor Kouyas, the Commissioner, the Tarpon Springs Committee for this meaningful proclamation recognizing Greek Independence Day. This gesture honors not only the rich history and enduring spirit of the Greek people, but also the contributions of Greek Americans to our community and to this great nation. We deeply appreciate your continued support and recognition of our heritage. Thank you once again, Mayor Kouyas, the Tarpon Springs Committee, and your helpful administration office for standing with us in celebration of freedom, democracy, and cultural pride. Zito Yalada, long live Greece, and God bless America. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna have Hometown Heroes proclamation, and I'd like young man Kaiser Campbell to come on up, sir, please. All right, so I met Kaiser when we had the two hurricanes. There was, we obviously have our Tarpon Springs community page. And I saw this young man go above and beyond to make sure to let the residents know he was there to help, there to give his muscle with his friends to be there and help everybody who was in need during the hurricanes and the recovery process. And so I got to see him around town, and I said, "Good job, sir. You know, we're seeing you everywhere, and you're out making a difference in the community." And I thought about it. I said, "If there was a way for me to give this young man an award to recognize him and future young men and women to help lead the community, I wanted to do that." And so I did find out there was a way. And so as my last meeting, I told Kaiser, "Please come on up on this day, and we're gonna recognize you as being a hometown hero and helping out your community." City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation honoring hometown heroes. Whereas hometown heroes are people who go above and beyond, exhibit unparalleled dedication and selflessness, demonstrating that even in the face of disaster, individuals can make a profound impact on the lives of others and their community. And whereas through their actions, these heroes inspire all Tarponites to believe in their ability to affect positive change, serving as role models and beacons of hope during challenging times. And whereas this year, the City of Tarpon Springs is proud to honor a young man, Kaiser Campbell, who has shown extraordinary commitment to the community by assisting countless citizens in the aftermath of Hurricanes Helene and Milton, embodying the true spirit of heroism. And whereas by honoring our hometown heroes, we celebrate the strength, courage, and generosity that define the character of our city. And we encourage all residents to aspire to such noble qualities. Now therefore, I, Panayotis Kouyas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of March 23rd through March 29th, 2025, as Hometown Heroes Week. Here you go, Mr. Campbell. Like to say a few words?
Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's supported me, especially my parents. My mom loses her car, my dad loses his car. Um, just all the support for giving back to the community, and I just wanna thank you guys.
Next, we have a resolution honoring a great man who served so much to his community, Mr. Alfred Quarterman, Sr. And we have the family. Look at the amount of people here. Look at the amount of people here. This is just a blessing to be able to read this resolution in front of everyone, this man. Uh, when you hear his story, he was born in Tarpon Springs, made a couple ventures outside the area, but was able to come back and give back to his community tremendously. So, uh, members of the family, we have a couple extra pieces, and whoever would, there like to be someone who would like to receive the proclamation? Please, everyone, just take a moment to listen to this man who just did so much for this community. Resolution 2025-25, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, extending the city's deep and heartfelt sympathy on the passing of Alfred Quarterman, Sr. Whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr. was born in Tarpon Springs, Florida to Idalia Willie and Richard Quarterman. He attended Union Academy where he completed his early education. He attended Pinellas High School in Clearwater, Florida, as there were no high schools at that time in Tarpon Springs for African-Americans, and graduated in 1947. After graduation, he relocated to New York City and enlisted in the Army. He served four years, which included two years in combat in Korea. And whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr., after being discharged, he returned to New York City and married his wife Hazel Oliver. In attempt to begin a career, he attended cubic tailoring school. While attending school, he was employed by a dry cleaner, which was part of tailoring. During this time, Alfred and Hazel began to start their family. After realizing that tailoring was not an open field for African-Americans, he decided to choose another avenue to better support his family. And whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr. was then employed by the New York City Transit Authority as a bus operator. He was promoted to a dispatcher, then transferred to budget control. During his tenure in budget control, he was promoted to superintendent, which eventually led him to the position of Director of Managerial Payroll, from which he retired in November 1990. And whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr., after retirement, relocated his family to Florida. He reinstated his membership with Mount Hermon Missionary Baptist Church and began to work with the youth and young adults for a short period of time. Under the leadership of Reverend Willie Edwards, he was made an honorary deacon. And whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr. visited Rose Cemetery, and upon visiting and seeing the deplorable condition of the cemetery, he was spiritually led and motivated to, quote-unquote, "do something about it." Due to his persistence and determination, along with working with the late Janie Wilson and the Board of Directors at that time, Rose Cemetery is now listed as a state historical site, the only black historical cemetery in Pinellas County. His ultimate goal was to see Rose Cemetery acquire national registry status, which it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places, March 2017. And whereas Alfred Quarterman, Sr., along with Rose Cemetery, was also dedicated to helping in the Union Academy neighborhood. He was the coordinator of the Paint and Rehab Program. This program allowed him to assist in painting and rehabilitation of over 70 homes in the community. He also served on the Tarpon Springs Historical Society Board. Mr. Quarterman enjoyed what he did freeheartedly and strictly voluntarily. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that the Board of Commissioners with profound regret and sorrow extend heartfelt sympathies to the family members, namely Hazel E. Quarterman, wife, Alfred E. Quarterman, son, and Leslie G. King, daughter. Be it furred, resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the City Commission, and that a copy be transmitted to the family of Alfred Quarterman, Sr., the State of Florida Department of Archives, and the Tarpon Springs Historical Society, passed and adopted this 25th day of March, 2025. Here you go, ma'am. Congratulations. I was just telling, ma'am, I've never seen an applause like this. This was amazing. It was very breathtaking. Ma'am, would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to thank everyone that supported the family during this illness. I just can't thank you enough, all of you that came out tonight. I appreciate each and everyone that participated in whatever I needed, and they will help too, me and my family. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're actually, we're gonna go back to our, is now, or we'll take some public comments on these proclamations as they were definitely important. Thank you. We will now go to comments on the resolution for Alfred Quarterman. Yes, sir. We didn't have a mic today. I had to do my little improv, but it was good.
You did good. My name is Glenn Davis. My address is 444 Pine Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'd like to thank the Commission for the acknowledgement that they gave to Mr. Quarterman tonight. And I would also like to ask and encourage the city they can do more to recognize a man that unselfishly gave a lot. I'm quite sure that there were times that him and Mrs. Quarterman might have had some words because he was late for dinner or missed dinner altogether because he was out giving of his time. And to my knowledge and recognition, everything that he did was without pay. This man showed a lot to the City of Tarpon Springs and to Rose Hill Cemetery. And I just feel that the city could do a little bit more in some type of acknowledgement for what he's contributed to this city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments?
Here to lack is 514 Ashland Avenue. I can say I didn't know Mr. Quarterman as many of you do. But I think as Glenn said, it's time to do something more. And I was thinking about this before. I thought about it before even when I used to stand up here to help Annie Dabs ask for an African-American museum. Now, the city foreclosed on William Emerson's property there over, what is it, on Oakwood Street in Levis? And they saved some of it. And for many years, she came here and I supported putting a museum there. The city's got the land to do it, but here's the bigger inequity that I've seen over the years, and maybe it's time to be rectified, as Glenn said, a bigger step, bigger step. I don't know all the intricacies that go on between the Rose Cemetery Foundation and various peoples. I don't care about that. What I do care about is that finally the city steps up, and let's have some equality. You work out an agreement where buy or purchase or lease the cemetery, and we treat it just like we do psychadia. Just like we do psychadia. You drive, I go visit my mom and dad and my aunts and uncles. Guy's out there on the mower, everything's nice and clean, it's all purty. And these people, because of the inequalities from the past, have had to struggle, pennies, dimes, nickels, quarters, fundraisers, whatever, to pay to fix up their cemetery. It's time to do it right and get it right. You want to honor Mr. Quarterman? You want to honor Annie Davis? You want to honor Willie Emerson? Do it the right way. You put in, you get Rose Cemetery under city management for the maintenance, and we work on getting that African-American museum where Willie Emerson owned the property. And it was between him and the churches. There was a church there back and forth as I looked at the records. And again, I don't know all the history, so I beg my ignorance. But I'm pleading to you now because you are the community that is affected. I can't do it alone. Annie's dead, William's dead. We need your help. God bless you all.
Are there any other public comments for the memorial resolution? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you, IT. Uh, we will now go to public comments on items that will not be on, not be discussed on tonight's agenda. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will be given four minutes to speak and two minutes to speak if you are on Zoom.
Athena Sardulia, 634 East Orange.
Phil Scandalaris, 935 Bay Shore Drive and 627 Bay Shore Drive.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
I wanted to, uh...
Thank you.
It's, uh, the mayor's birthday today, so I thought we'd all join in and sing. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Panayotis. Happy birthday to you. Got a cake for you, too.
Hey, my last meeting is mayor on my birthday. You can't make this stuff up, you know? We, we, we... Yeah. Just zoom in a little bit. This is actually really cool. Wow, this is beautiful. It's a nice sponger helmet. Thank you, Phil. Thank you all so much. It's really an honor. Thank you. Yes, and now everyone can go eat it in the back while we get to work.
Let them eat cake.
Are there any other public comments?
Hello, Jane Harrington, 1021 Jamaica Way, Tarpon Springs.
You might want to hold up a second. It's...
Yeah.
It's kind of noisy.
We'll just wait a minute while we get things to calm down.
This doesn't go against your time. Don't worry.
No. We could eat cake. It looked really good.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, the election is now over. I would like to publicly thank Commissioner Eisner for running for office. He has risen above the noise that continued and continued to represent the people of Tarpon Springs. He has always made himself available to all citizens. He has provided tremendous support to the people during hurricanes and the aftermath. He should be proud that he is a board member elected to his seat by the voters twice. Commissioner Eisner remains true to his word, focusing on improvements for all of Tarpon Springs. Mr. Mayor, it's unfortunate, in my opinion, that you are not continuing in the mayor's seat. You have done a wonderful job in keeping the city focused on tangible improvements that will carry... You have done a wonderful job in keeping the city focused on tangible improvements that will carry us into the future. Thank you for what you have achieved as a mayor in such a very short time. I do look forward to your continued influence as you return to Commissioner position for this new term.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Taylor, nineteen ninety-one Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing Mr. Quarterman. That was beautiful, beautiful. And I'm so thankful he got honored here tonight. And maybe we can see future things that we can do to honor him. I wanted to address Mr. Gaddis' comments, though, about the city and Rose Cemetery. I want to thank the city for bringing garbage cans, putting all new garbage cans around Rose Cemetery. So thank y'all for helping us. The city has opened a gate on the side where we have access to go to the dumpster. The city has put Rose Cemetery on, for the cleanup that we have. They helped us during the hurricane, and they put a dumpster out there for us. They also have regular rounds for the city maintenance guy to come and pick up the garbage in Rose Cemetery. So, Rose Cemetery, if you haven't been out there lately, it might have been a while since you've been out there, Mr. Gaddis, but I invite people to stop through there because we are doing a, we are doing a, we are improving Rose Cemetery with the maintenance that's being done. And I want to personally thank the city for the part that y'all are doing to help Rose Cemetery whenever we call for y'all to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue down the street in Palm Harbor. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the phosphate mining industry. The phosphate, the Mosaic Phosphate Mining Company held a public meeting in Plant City earlier this month on March eleventh to inform us that they intend on injecting the wastewater from their phosphate mining operations into the ground. The Mosaic Phosphate Company wants to take the same type of toxic sludge that the Piney Point disaster spilled into Tampa Bay and pump their toxic wastewater into the ground, infecting the groundwater with the caustic waste fluids of their phosphate mining operations. The Mosaic Phosphate Mining has unearthed nearly half of central Florida in search of nitrogen-based fertilizer and raw material that is ultimately refined into the making of plutonium, desecrating the Florida landscape. In its process, the phosphate mining has proven to be a horrible steward of the Florida's ecostructure. When the mosaic industry tries to explain their logic of injecting caustic, noxious, corrosive phosphate wastewater into a confined layer of the aquifer's substrate, what could possibly go wrong? Trust me, I don't trust them or their chemistry. Intermixing chemicals or components into a confined salty saline or brine-like substrate of the aquifer could very well cause a chemical reaction underground using the salty substrate as a catalyst, causing things underground to react, causing gases to build up, causing an expansion of such or an eruption, possibly even an explosion underground. Once the phosphate water is interjected underground, such potential catalysts will remain in the substrate indefinitely, interjecting toxins, possible carcinogens, causing gases to build up underground could cause an explosion. It's all a ticking time bomb just waiting to go off. I feel so we have a possible national security issue in regards to the phosphate industry injecting wastewater into the substrate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Tonya Corey. My husband and I own Acropolis Greek Taverna on the sponge docks. And I'm here tonight to advocate for preserving the unique charm, character, and economic stability of the sponge docks.
Ma'am, are you referring to the food truck?
Yes.
Where, if you could save those comments for that item, but you're more than welcome to talk about anything that's not on the agenda of just for general public comments.
So I apologize. So point of order, so when the item comes up, then you open up for comments?
Yes, ma'am.
On every single item? Wow, that's fantastic. Okay.
And we like compliments. Okay, here to lax five one four Ashland Avenue. I picked this one out for you, Mike. Samuel, eight. Title, Israel asks for a king. When Samuel grew old, he appointed his sons as judges for Israel. But his sons did not walk in his ways. They turned aside after dishonest gain and accepted brides in perverted justice. So all the elders of Israel gathered together and came to Samuel at Rama, and they said to him, you are old, and your sons do not walk in your way. Now appoint a king to lead us, such as all the other nations have. But when they said this, give us a king to lead us, this displeased Samuel. So he prayed to the Lord, and the Lord told him, listen to all that the people are saying to you. It is not you they have rejected as their king, but me. As they have done from the day I brought them up of Egypt until this day, forsaking me and serving other gods, so they are doing to you. Now listen to them, but warn them solemnly, and let them know what the king who will reign over them will do to them. Samuel told all the words of the Lord to the people who were asking him for a king, and he said, this is what the king who will reign over you will do. He will take your sons and make them serve with his chariots and horses, and they will run in front of the chariots. Some he will sign to be commanders of thousands and commanders of fifties, and others to plow his ground and reap his harvest, and still others to make weapons of war and equipment for his chariots. He will take your daughters to be perfumers, cooks and bakers. He will take the best of your fields and vineyards and olive groves and give them to his attendants. He will take a tenth of your grain and of your vintage and give it to his officials and attendants, your men servants and maid servants, and the best of your cattle and donkeys he will take for his own use. They will take a tenth of your flocks, and you yourselves will become his slaves. When that day comes, you will cry out for relief from the Lord you have chosen, and the Lord will not answer you in that day. But the people refused to listen to Samuel. No, 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 they said, we want a king over us. Then we will all be like all the other nations with a king to lead us and to go out before us and fight our battles. And when Samuel heard all that the people said, he repeated it before the Lord, and the Lord answered him, listen to them and give them a king. Y'all can think about that later. Now, so, elections last week. I have to give you a little recap for people. You can verify with Elaine, Irene, sorry, my mistake. We have about eighteen thousand registered voters. Seven hundred and ninety-one votes for Mr. Eisner, seven twenty-one for Ms. Franzese. That comes out to about fifteen hundred. You divide that by eighteen thousand, you come out to eight point four percent. Mr. Eisner got four point three nine percent, and Ms. Franzese got four percent. So, again, disinterest in elections. No bust to Mr. Eisner, congratulations, but he was elected by less than five percent of the registered voters. It's just sad. And then I spoke to Irene about it, and I mentioned it previously with the way this legislature is going, the way they passed the law that after the last November election, if you had a mail-in ballot, they wiped it out. You had to go back and re-register. And a lot of people didn't know that. A lot of people didn't. So if you look at our numbers compared to what we normally have mail-in ballots versus what we got, pitiful. So, elections matter. Who you put up in Tallahassee makes these stupid laws, how they restrict us, how they do this. Just just be thoughtful. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Tina Biltrus, one twenty-four Athen Street, Tarpon Springs. Hello, everyone. Mr. Mayor, my nephew, happy birthday. Hello, everybody. Mr. Eisner, congratulations. Mr. Colianis, congratulations. And Mr. Kudlaas, congratulations. Before I begin everything, I want to say, my nephew, Panayotti, you have done an outstanding job. Be proud of yourself and how much you've accomplished in such a short time and with everything that has happened. I don't think anyone could have done a better job than you. So be proud of yourself and what you have showed this town that you've done. Now, I want to talk about, when you recognize people in this town and give proclamations, it's so wonderful how you always have a personal story to show. Like when it was Don Tacos, or Johnny's Tap House, or the spot. You made a personal, you made it personal. It was so emotional. You had a personal story to share. It wasn't just now. It went back ten years ago, or it went back to your childhood, growing up with Tori, or what it was. And that's what shows you're a people's person. You're a true person of Tarpon Springs. You show that you love this town. You showed diversity. You showed energy to this town, and your smile brightened up this town. In every picture of the chamber, at every ribbon cutting, you shined more than the sun. Now, I want to go back to the night you were appointed. It was a very disturbing night for many of us. You had two of your peers support you and one that didn't. And it was disturbing because I don't know the reasoning. Maybe it was because you were a young man, so determined, or maybe it was your demeanor or your determination. But this board is about teamwork. It's about working together and working within. And, but he wanted an outsider, and that's fine. But at the end, it all worked out. But remember, you are all here to work together as a team first. Work within, then work your way out. Also, when you're making decisions, make the decisions for the best and what's best for the town and how we're going to show progress and how we're going to put this town on the map. Because you guys can do a great job. You guys have done a great job these past few months, and keep up the good work. I love you. You've done a great job, and we are all proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Aunt Tina. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. We will now go to consent agenda items. Item four A, attorney fees, unit Salzman P A invoice eight six one seven zero. Four B, Johnson Jackson P LLC invoice one four four seven seven. Five A, special events, Night in the Islands, twenty twenty-five. Five B, special events, Easter Extravaganza, twenty twenty-five. Item six, renew file number two two zero one three nine dash C dash J L Security Equipment System Services. Item seven, increase file number two four zero zero nine two dash N dash A S Cal dash FLO Line Parts and Services. Item eight, ratify file number two five zero one four five dash N dash J L Single Source Purchase of Legal and Promotional Advertising. Item nine, increase file number two two zero one five three dash C dash A S Wireless Data Voice and Parts. Item ten, increase file number two four zero one one eight dash N dash A S Single Source Purchase of O Vivo slash E I M C O O E M Parts and Services. Item eleven, approve novation for file number two three zero one seven six dash C dash A S Fire Equipment Supplies and Services. Item twelve, increase file number two four zero one two three dash C dash J L Maintenance Repair and Operations M R O Equipment and Supplies. Item thirteen, award file number two five zero one two one dash N dash P H Single Source Purchase of Ford Original Equipment Manufacturer O E M Automotive Parts and Services. Item fourteen, two four dash P L C dash sixteen Tarpon Springs Public Library Construction Grant Agreement Amendment. Item fifteen, award, award file number two five zero one four nine dash C dash P H Tires and Related Equipment. Item sixteen, award file number two five zero one four one dash P dash P H Fire Extinguisher and Hood Suppression Services. Commissioners, are there any items you would like to pull? Commissioners on either side, any other items? Okay. We will now go to public comments on items four, consent agenda items four B through sixteen. Are there any public comments on those consent agenda items? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items four B through sixteen.
Hold on a second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Monsieur Banther?
Yes.
Monsieur Di Donato?
Yes.
Monsieur Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item four A, Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure everybody knows this, but since I've been a Commissioner, now it's dating back three years, I have kept tabs of the attorney's fees every single bill, every single month. And this is my point where I wanted to thank Attorney Salzman for not only being there to answer all of the staff's whims on a, on a, on a emergency basis, on a regular basis, but he's also done this at a economical to the city rate. Some people work because of the love of their job. Some people work for the finances, and I did want to just call him out and explain that I have watched him in action, and I've watched all the attorneys in action, and he has done an amazing job and done it at a very efficient rate to the city. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on item four A? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item four A.
Hold on a second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Monsieur Banther?
Yes.
Monsieur Di Donato?
Yes.
Monsieur Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. We are now going to business items of the day. Item seventeen, ratification of Tabitha Atkins as Human Resources Director, and we have City Manager Charles Redser.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we went through an extensive application process. We had several hundred applicants for that position. And Paul Smith did a great job narrowing it down. And then with the panel, we narrowed it to about a dozen and did Zoom interviews to narrow that further to four. Two of those dropped out, finding other opportunities, and then we interviewed the last two here in town, and we selected Tabitha based on her qualifications and her, how she got along with the group, and just, we think she'd be a great fit for the staff. We recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. That's great to hear. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve a business item seventeen, ratification of Tabitha Atkins as Human Resources Director.
Send it.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Monsieur Banther?
Yes.
Monsieur Di Donato?
Yes.
Monsieur Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item eighteen, St. Nicholas Resurrection Service Orthodox Easter has been withdrawn. We are now going to item nineteen, appointment to Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Board. City Clerk, can you take it from here?
Thank you. So we received a notice from the Housing Authority that the resignation of Martha Jean Cola, who was a regular member, and Gillian Joy Jackson Torres, who was a resident member, had resigned. So they're asking to appoint the two applications they forwarded us. That is to appoint Karen Gallagher to fill the unexpired term of Martha Marty Jean Cola, regular member. This term expires November twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and appoint- And appoint Catherine Blevins to fill the unexpired term of Gillian Joy Jackson Torres, who's the regular resident member. That term would expire November twenty second, twenty twenty five as well.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion for item nineteen To Appoint Karen Gallagher to Fill the Unexpired Term of Martha Marty Jean Cola. Uh, regular member. This term expires November twenty second, two thousand twenty five. And appoint Catherine Blevins to fill the unexpired term of Gillian Joy Jackson Torres, resident member. This term expired November twenty second, two thousand twenty five.
No move.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Mr. Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis.
Yes.
Mayor Colias.
Yes. Item twenty Appointment to Public Art Committee. A City Clerk, can you please go over the item?
Yes, thank you. Uh, currently, the committee has four vacancies. At this time, we have one application we are bringing forward for the board's consideration. Um, we do, uh, I'm going to advertise too, if anyone's interested in serving on any of our boards, to please get ahold of the clerk's office. Uh, but the board action would be to appoint Martha Hickey at the bottom to fill the unexpired term of Graham Jones. This term would expire October thirty first of twenty twenty five.
Thank you, City Clerk. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Um, the Chair will entertain a motion for item twenty Appointment to Public Art Committee to Appoint Martha Hickey to Fill the Unexpired Term of Graham Jones. This term would expire October thirty first, two thousand twenty five.
No move.
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis.
Yes.
Mayor Colias.
Yes. Item twenty one Appointment to Sustainability Committee. City Clerk?
Currently, this committee has four vacancies. The current alternate number one, Mrs. Neam, would like to be considered for one of the vacant regular member positions. Also, at this time, we have one application we are bringing forward for the board's consideration. Um, so you can either, you could appoint either A or B to fill the unexpired term of Dory Larson. This term will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And then you would need to appoint A or B to fill one of the regular member positions. This would expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Okay, and those are both two regular member positions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The Chair will make a a motion for item twenty one To Appoint Soban Nihin to fill the unexpired term of Dory Larson. This term will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And appoint Diane Brown to fill one of the regular member positions. This term would expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Mayor, quick question.
Yes.
For the clerks, um, so Shabon is currently on there as an alternate, correct?
That is correct.
And if we're appointing her, as the mayor has suggested, to fill the term of Dory Larson, that expires on September thirtieth this year, correct? Is she eligible to be reappointed at that time? It's not going to prevent her from doing anything? I don't want her to get caught in some technicality, you know?
We just need to check to make sure.
I know it gets tricky. Trust me, yeah.
Yeah, those those months are coming up soon.
Yeah, I've I've gotten myself, so I understand.
I don't believe sustainability has term limits. They have terms, but not term limits.
Okay.
They would be able to serve of a maximum of ten years otherwise. In this case, I would have to go back. It is not in the backup.
Okay, well, then if that's the case, then I'm good with with what the mayor suggested. I'll I'll motion to approve.
Second. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis.
Yes.
Mayor Colias.
Yes. Item twenty two Code Enforcement Lean Settlement Proposal, uh, one one four five River Edge Drive. Uh, Attorney Salzman, can you elaborate the topic?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, this is a situation, and I believe the requester is here. Uh, so he'll be available to answer any questions. But in this situation, the city was approached to see if we can resolve a code lien. Normally, you don't see these kind of cases directly to you. The difference in this particular case is that in August of twenty twenty four, a foreclosure proceeding began on this property. Um, for those of you that are familiar with these foreclosure proceedings, the city actually is a defendant in those proceedings. However, we are second or third in line for payment, and the mortgage is usually the one that's paid first. Um, in this particular case, the property is actually going to be put up for sale. We were approached, um, by Mr. Smith Gillespie, uh, to try to resolve the code lien. Frankly, uh, his proposal would probably be the only way the city will receive any funds in this case. Um, so the proposal is for twenty five thousand dollars for the code liens. Uh, the property, uh, right now, the mortgage holders are asking for a hundred and fifty one thousand at the sale time. So, um, there are some other liens that are on the property that could go before the city. So really, we're bringing this forward to see if the board is interested in in recovering some monies in this case. This was a maintenance issue on the property. Um, I don't, I do not believe the city has twenty five thousand dollars worth of, uh, costs into this case. Uh, it's just one where the fines just continued on for a long period of time. They were a hundred dollars a day. And I believe if, Mayor, if it's okay, we would ask the Requestor to to bring forward any additional information.
Sure. Please do.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to kind of outline how the situation took place in the first place.
One minute, sir. Does he have a a certain amount of time, City Clerk, or?
Usually. Could you please identify yourself though?
Sure, I'm sorry. Uh, Brandon Smith Gillespie, one one four five River Edge Drive. So, uh, just to outline how this situation happened in the first place. Um, at at the time that these liens started, uh, or the the fees started to be accrued. Um, I was traveling around. At the time, I owned a a fairly successful company. And I was paying a property management business to take care of the property. Uh, they said they were taking care of it. Uh, it turned out they were just taking my money. Did not. Uh, and I started getting charged a hundred dollars a day, um, you know, unbeknownst to me. Um, I was never served legally or anything like that. So, uh, COVID then destroyed my company. Um, I I kept it up as long as I could, uh, but I blew through every dollar I had trying to accomplish that. And, uh, where I stand today is, um, I have a a good friend of mine that's willing to loan me, uh, twenty five thousand dollars. And I have a buyer for the property. Uh, the money will go to the IRS, uh, you know, the the sale of the property. Um, as I try and kind of rebuild myself financially. But, um, I wanted to make a good faith effort to, uh, number one, try and compensate the city. And, uh, number two, try and help me, uh, resolve this issue because with without it, I can't close on the property and I I I'm ruined. So, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Um, we have a couple of questions from the Commission for you. Commissioner Banther's light was on first.
Yes, thank you. Um, City Attorney, this is, I'm trying to understand this situation. Um, in my seven years, I've never seen this in this manner come before us. So I'm not trying to let him off from paying us, period, but what is his incentive to do this?
I think this would give him the ability to sell the property before the, uh, uh, actual sale by the courts. And the original, I believe it was April third was the original sale time, but they postponed it. In an effort, I believe, for, um, Mr. Smith Gillespie to try to resolve this and pay off those. So I think he's coming forward. It will obviously help him to some extent, uh, and help the city.
If he doesn't, if he doesn't pay off these 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 liens, I mean, like from us, and the property sells. Trying to figure out how how this benefits him.
Well, you're correct, Commissioner. We probably won't see any money in that situation.
Uh, yeah, if I can, uh, just chime in. So I I have a buyer, uh, that's willing to purchase the property. Um, I've paid the mortgage for, you know, fifteen, sixteen years, so there's some equity there. Um, and that would allow me to pay off the IRS lien, which, you know, is going to take priority over everything else. Um, so I I I figured it was kind of the only way of a win-win, right? I mean, um, luckily, I have a friend that's willing to, you know, to loan me that kind of money. And, uh, it would allow me to sell the property and pay the government, uh, part of what I owe them. And, uh, compensate the city for, you know, for the pool issue, uh, with code enforcement.
So you could not do this plan without settling with the city, correct, or?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the buyers are, have said that's.
And what's our cost on this again? I'm looking at this here.
Chief, I don't know if we had, Chief, do you have? Yeah, I I think this has been, uh, I don't think we made, I I don't think we came in and cleared, cleaned up the property. So it is really the cost of just bringing the case forward, uh, on a code enforcement manner, which is usually about fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, when somebody comes before us like this, which 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 takes a lot, okay? And you seem, you seem like you're pretty upfront. You've gone through this this type of vetting. I would obviously happily accept what you're offering, but I'll hear what my colleagues have to say, but I I wouldn't be opposed to less.
Uh, Commissioner, I also would point out, uh, as the Deputy City Clerk reminded me, there is still a utility lien that the city has.
And that has to be resolved, yes. As far as the code, but that's separate from the code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Utility lien has to get paid, obviously. But as far as a code enforcement lien, which I know we have, we have, we have, we have discretion on. I would be in favor of what he's offering or less, depending on what my my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you for coming before us. How did you come up with twenty five thousand out of the three hundred plus thousand dollars as a number?
Frankly, um, that was the most I I could get anyone to loan me. Um, I, like I mentioned, I mean, when code, so just to give you some background, um, I owned a company that provided, uh, educational software. Two companies that did in-person training, uh, around the country for information technology. So when COVID hit, uh, without people being able to be physically in place, it just collapsed. Um, it just went from doing several million a year to nothing. Um, so I just blew through all my savings, uh, just trying to keep the employees paid and, uh, in hopes that it would end. And, uh, you know, I can get it back going, uh, again. So, um, I I asked everyone I knew and, uh, I asked for as much as I could possibly get. And that's, uh, you know, I mean, to to resolve the issue, uh, you know, I sold, I'm sorry. Um, I sold off, you know, anything of value, sold my car, et cetera, to get the pool fixed. And, uh, you know, resolve the 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 issue that was occurring. And, uh, this is just, that's all I have.
My other question that I would have for you, how long were you away from the house from the time you allowed the managing agent to handle this till you, um, became aware? Did you not come back to see the house at all during any of this time?
No, no, that's that's why I was paying them. I mean, I I I just, I guess I should have been more diligent. But I just assumed that when you pay a property management company that they, you know, that they manage to come, the property. And, uh, you know, I I didn't get any letters in the mail or anything like that. Um, so I I was just under the assumption that everything was fine. And it it turns out what the issue was is the pool was green. And I, you know, I I know that is an issue, but, um, that's that that was the extent of the the issue. Uh, you know, the the lawn was being mowed. It wasn't like the the property fell into disrepair. It's just that the pool was, uh, sorry, the pool was green.
Is it your intent that when this foreclosure goes down, that your friend buys this house for you and returns it to you?
No, no, I I I have a different buyer. Um, you know, I've I've known, uh, my friend since we were kids. And, uh, you know, he trusts me to rebuild the a business and pay him back. And, uh, it's nice enough to do that.
Right. That's for the twenty five thousand that you're borrowing. I'm referring to the profit. You said there would be a little bit of a profit in the house.
Oh, no, that that all goes to the IRS.
So there is no equity in the house that wouldn't be given over to the IRS and whoever else the debtors are?
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. I should have clarified. Yes, so, um, the, basically, the IRS lien is three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Um, so they take priority. So they're going to take all the capital, uh, you know, from the sale of the property. Um, and and that's kind of why I'm trying to resolve it this way is I just have no, you know, the the IRS will take priority. And then I don't know if the bank takes next priority. I I I don't know how it works. But, um, I'm just trying to make right with the city and sell it to the buyer, get the government their money. That will allow me to set up a payment plan and allow me to kind of rebuild my, uh, my life.
I just want you to know I'm very sorry that what's happened to you. Um, you know, a lot of people did get hurt during COVID. And, uh, my condolences that, you know, this was a a really bad set of circumstances for you. So.
Thank you.
I I appreciate you coming before us and letting us know your hardship. And, uh, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this, um, but I, uh, I appreciate your honor in coming before us and 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 speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor, your light was on next.
So, um, just so we're clear, the if we don't take this, and this is actually to the City Attorney. If we take no settlement here and this goes to the courthouse steps. It could be a.
Yeah, we're down the line in priority.
Right.
Uh, code liens are usually low anyway. We're always behind the mortgage. Um, there are other liens that are ahead of ours. So I would say if you do not accept the twenty five thousand dollars, your chances of receiving anything on the code lien are not very good.
Not very good. Okay, so, um, sir, I I don't, I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying and and the circumstances that led you here today. But this couldn't be easy for you to sit up here and have to, you know, bear your your soul here this today. And and so I respect that. Um, you know, you're a young man, and I'm sure you're going to move on and and, uh, and things will work out for you. I I'm going to go ahead and and support receiving the twenty five and settling for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner DiDonato, your light?
Well, I I concur with what's been said. I would I would add that that the purposes I see, uh, code enforcement has always been to bring violators into compliance. And I, right now, it looks like that's what you're trying to do, and I support and respect that.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, just to to clarify, it's, uh, um, I fixed the pool and and, uh, did the landscaping and everything six, seven months ago. Uh, once I was made aware of this, so the property is, uh, under compliance.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther, your light was on again?
Yes, thank you. Um, I mean, I've I've often seen us settle for less in situations like 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 this. Um, we don't have any information as to how much, you know, usually we see the admin cost and this and that. We don't have that here. So I'm assuming it's not significant. From what I, from from what I hear today, the applicant has brought it. Are are we in compliance? Is that?
We are in.
We are in compliance. I I see no reason to take twenty five thousand dollars from from from, um, from this man. Um, in the sense that that's just way too much. I I I think he's paid his penance. What he's doing up here in front of us is what most people don't do. So I would be in favor of five thousand dollars and I'll motion to that. Thank you.
Okay, um, one moment. Commissioner Eisner brought his light on. Please, Commissioner Eisner, be quick.
So, um, that all sounds good. Um, and I appreciate what my fellow commissioner has to say, but I kind of agree with the Vice Mayor. I don't think when you owe three hundred plus thousand dollars, um, you know, I feel bad that it it got to that point. Um, but, you know, there's a lot of paperwork that goes on. There's a lot of follow-up that goes on. I honestly don't think twenty five thousand dollars is, um, the end of the world for this. Um, I I know that means a lot to you and it definitely means a lot to us as well. But there has to be some sort of a, um, you know, a penalty because there is a utility bill as well. We don't know what the utility bill is. We don't know what the utility bill is and we don't know how much of it is a code violation, so.
If I could just offer that, so that, I was unaware of the fact that if you turn off your water, that you still incur fees. I just had no idea. So I called and I said, I'm not going to be at the property. I don't need any water. They canceled the water, but apparently there's a fee just to, just to have the rights to water, I believe. I understand that. But anyway, it's seven thousand two hundred dollars, but the seller, or the buyer rather, has agreed to pay that. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I go ahead and make a motion to accept the settlement as proposed?
Wait, just for clarification, Commissioner Banther has already made a motion. We need to know if there's.
I mean, I withdraw it if there's no support, obviously.
I didn't realize it was a motion. I thought it was just suggesting.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't, I didn't take it as.
I will withdraw the motion for official.
Okay.
Matters.
And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the settlement as presented.
Second. There are no further.
Can I ask one, Mayor, sorry to interrupt, time period for payment? When can you pay this?
Immediately. My friend said, just come pick up a check or wire, however you want it done. I can pay tomorrow.
What's reasonable?
Ten days.
Ten days?
Yeah, because we have to get a, he gave us a proposal, but I need to put it a little more in legalese for settlement, so.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the settlement offer as presented and to be paid within ten working days.
Second. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes.
DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, discussion and direction, golf course clubhouse and business plan. And we have Public Services Director Tommy Keiger to present.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you. Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. And today we'll be presenting a brief update on the golf course business plan and clubhouse. And we'll be asking the board for discussion and direction on our path forward for the golf course. And also with me today, I have Howard Hunt, our golf course manager, and Georgina Gatzis with WJ Architects, who is representing the architect for the conceptual design for the golf course, for the proposed clubhouse. So we'll start off with a brief intro into the general background of the general business of golf. So the board has a reasonable understanding of the sort of business environment that we're operating in. And the good news is, is business is doing very well. Since 2020, golf has been growing dramatically in America. It is the largest growing sport by numbers. You might hear about pickleball. Pickleball is the largest growing by percentage. We have a lot of golfers already. And in 2023, four, three point four million Americans played golf for the first time. We're seeing lots of growth in juniors. We're seeing growth in women and young adults. The popularity of Topgolf and YouTube golf content is really exacerbated this post-COVID golf boom. And we're seeing record pace of play. Here you can see a few examples of some of the things that we're seeing, you know, young folks, YouTube, the Valspar tournament right down the road. All of these things are generating interest in golf courses and particularly in municipal golf. And also we're seeing shifts in demographics. People like to think about golf as a, you know, sort of retiree sport. And we do have a healthy amount of that. But now the average golfer is under the age of fifty. Fifty-seven percent of golfers in America are now under the age of fifty. So it's definitely a growing game and a good investment. Within the golf business, you'll, within the golf business, you'll see a lot of discussion in golf trade industry magazines and Golf Digest about the golf municipal renaissance or the munisance. In particular, municipal golf is growing faster and outpacing performance in private golf courses. You're still seeing a little bit of a correction in some of the very exclusive private courses and the smaller private courses. But overall, many communities are reinvesting in their municipal golf courses and they're seeing this as a smart investment. For example, right down the road, the Needness recently invested four point five million dollars in the course renovation. The Saint, the City of St. Petersburg has recently invested in Cypress Links. Tampa has been reinvesting in Rogers Park through the Tampa Sports Authority. The Babes Aharias Car Switch is also part of the Tampa Sports Authority's gotten all new greens. So other folks are following suit and striking while the iron's hot. We're in a good business cycle for golf, so they're reinvesting in facilities. We've also been reinvesting in success over time at the golf course currently. Over the last few years, we've experienced record play. We've been over sixty thousand rounds a year over the last few years. And you can see here, we've got a trend showing, oh, that's a little hard to see. But in the past, the twenty, late twenty-tens were sort of a record low time for golf. And we were sort of growing out of that and the post-COVID golf boom has really helped us in particular. In the past, we've been around fifty thousand, in the good times, in the early twenty-tens, we were around fifty thousand rounds a year. We're really growing up over sixty thousand rounds. Last year, we did sixty-eight thousand rounds of golf. And we've, because of that, we've had to reinvest in the facilities to support that level of play. So we recently completed a quarter million dollar tee box renovation to expand the tee boxes to accommodate all those new people taking off and beating up the turf a little bit. And we also, it's become time now to reinvest in the clubhouse facilities themselves. We need new parkings. We need an updated site plan. And we also need the space to be able to host tournaments and to accommodate all these golfers that are visiting our facility. A little bit on the financial position of the course. Over the last five years, we've generated an operating profit, which is very good. I know there's been some discussion in the past about do we make money or not with golf operations? The answer is absolutely yes. You will note here on this graph, the green line is annual revenues. And it was slightly below that red line and that was the golf course paying off the last of its operating debt that it owed the city from some historic practices back in the nineties when it was under private operation. So absent that last debt payment, over the last five years, the golf has generated a net operating profit and has sustained that over a period of time. In 2024, we generated eight hundred thousand dollars in operating profit. And in, by the end of 2024, our final fiscal position has over a million dollars in the Golf Course Enterprise Fund as a cash balance. So we have a positive cash balance. We have money to begin reinvesting in those facilities and want a firm financial footing for reinvestment. Here you can see some year-over-year performance numbers for accumulated annual revenues by month. You'll notice that purple line is 2021. That was the sort of first post-COVID golf year. That's conversely also the lowest annual total revenues. And pretty much every year since then, we've been meeting new record annual revenues. And the blue line here that you'll see that's partial up through January, that's this year. And even with the disruptions to play during the hurricanes and things like that, we are still on track to beat previous revenue targets. And that's due to record pace of play and also good revenues per round. So what are our next steps? Where the current clubhouse has been in place since the nineteen sixties, it's an end of life. So it was a little bit poorly maintained when the course was under private management back in the nineties. There was a lot of deferred maintenance. You go to a private operations company. They put exactly what they needed to, to keep it running and not really much more into the facilities. So there was a bit of deferred maintenance and that's all sort of coming due. We also do need to add space in order to host tournaments. Currently, we don't have the facilities that we need to host tournaments on site. We have two annual tournaments. One of them is the HEPA league and, or tournament. And both those facility, both those tournaments go off-site after the tournament's over to do their awards ceremony and their banquet and all that sort of thing. And it prohibits us from basically holding more tournaments and more events. So we also need some additional parking. We've been working on plans with the architects and the engineers for how we could expand that. And at this point, we've been working on a conceptual design and it's complete. And we also have money budgeted in this year's budget to fully self-fund within the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, a full design and site, a site plan for the Golf Course Clubhouse and other site improvements. We also had some goals that we wanted to be considered when we were, while we were doing this work. Number one was to create an event space. Number two was to create that additional parking that we need. We did want to add more food and beverage capacity, including a liquor bar. I know that's been a priority for some folks and perhaps myself included. The, and we also wanted to create a destination. We want this to be somewhere that can draw people in the city, that will draw people here and that they'll come, play and stay and then go out in the city and see the rest of Tarpon Springs. And most importantly, we want this to be financially sustainable while maintaining affordability as a community asset. So here you can see the site plan, the conceptual site plan for the new clubhouse. On the left, you can see the existing building, dating of the nineteen sixties. And just to the south of that, we have one of our two practice greens. The concept as it stands currently is to convert the, is to construct the proposed clubhouse on the, one of the two existing practice screens right in front of the parking lot. Keep the existing clubhouse in use through constructions, so there wouldn't be disruption to customers or to minimize those disruptions. And then the other practice green would long-term become our main practice area. And this would also allow us to demo the existing clubhouse and add parking. So here's one concept, the first concept that we have for the clubhouse. This is one of the renderings provided by WJ Architects. This is sort of our old Florida concept. The course is on the Florida Historic Golf Trail. And interestingly enough, it is the oldest currently operating municipal golf course in the state of Florida, which is very cool. And so we wanted to honor the sort of historical nature of the golf course as part of our community with a little bit of a historical styled building. So here's the site or the layout for the proposed clubhouse, some of the details. We're going to have a front porch up front to welcome people in, right by the pro shop. There'd be a wraparound back porch for outdoor space. We'd have about a fourteen hundred square foot event space, which would be enough to host an event of about a hundred folks. We'd have a really cool indoor/outdoor bar, a catering kitchen to service those events independently of the other food and beverage facilities for the main customers. Outdoor-facing restrooms for people that want to come up and park their carts and use the restroom and then go eat a hot dog or whatnot at the outdoor bar. This would be about fifty-four hundred square feet of conditioned space and twenty-three hundred square feet of usable outdoor space for dining and recreation and whatnot. And we would get twenty-two new parking spaces. Here's a rendering of the back. This would be the wraparound back porch. This would overlook the ninth green, which would be really neat. You could watch people hit their approach shots and putt while you're enjoying a beverage or a meal. And here's some of the renderings of the elevation. So we've got the north elevation, the south elevation. The north elevation would have cart parking for people making the turn from the front nine to the back nine. And the south elevation, a little bit less windows because that's near a tee box. So, but we would have access for the people to be in the clubhouse and looking out from the pro shop to see when their tee time starts over the starter shed. We got some interior renders here of the bar and the pro shop. And this is the other design concept that we've been exploring with the architects. Again, this is a little bit inspired by our current clubhouse, which is a sort of mid-century building. So this is sort of an updated, mid-century modern concept that was provided by the architect. Very similar layouts. You're getting a lot of the same stuff, indoor/outdoor bar, the wraparound porch. Little bit more square footage on the inside. You're still getting the same event space for about a hundred people. But again, very similar layouts, just different architectural styling. And here's the concept for what that back porch and bar would look like. And similarly, we've got the renderings for the north and south elevations for what that would look like. Once again, snack bar and pro shop, very similar inside. It's really about the exterior architectural styling. So in summary, we've got two options that we're currently considering. Option A, the sort of old Florida clubhouse style. That project concept inclusive of all the site work would come to about four point one million dollars, including the parking improvements and everything that goes with that and all the site work. Option B, a little bit more square footage, show, a little bit more costly. Current conceptual cost estimate is four point three million dollars provided by the architects and also reviewed by the engineers that we've had working on this. And that's also inclusive of the site work. So the big question is, what can we afford? We've been working on a business plan. The goal is to complete the design in 2025 and to fully self-fund the clubhouse via a ten-year construction loan with five hundred thousand dollars in cash financing from the current fund balance. We would begin construction in 2026, phase that to minimize disruption to pace of, to play. This would result in about four hundred thousand plus dollars in annual debt service. And this would also enable us to support future CIP expenditures of about a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year, which is very similar to what we see in other golf courses managed by the Tampa Sports Authority, for example. And we're also planning for, you know, annual operating costs increases. That's all in there. And also a little bit of an increased bump in revenue in 2027, once the clubhouse is in place for improved food and beverage margins and event fees and things like that to help self-fund the course. And long-term, our goal would be to maintain a fund balance of at least five hundred thousand dollars at about fifty thousand rounds a year. So you can see here, we've got a little snapshot of what one scenario might look like for our projections for golf course revenues and projected expenses, as well as our historicals. The yellow line here, you can see is operating costs only. The red line that you see is all expensive, inclusive of debt service and capital. So you can see from gross revenues to that yellow line, still a healthy operating profit and that could support that debt service. But we didn't just look at one scenario. We looked at lots of scenarios. So we did a sort of sensitivity analysis to look at different levels of play and what might happen if there's a bit of a market correction in the golf industry, looking between fifty thousand rounds and sixty-eight thousand rounds, which is what we saw last year in a few different scenarios of what if we're doing about sixty thousand rounds a year, but we had a little bit of an economic contraction and we really dropped quite a bit for a couple of years and then sort of bounced back. And what we found was that the golf course could, in almost every scenario, sustain, sustain the debt service for a four point one million dollar clubhouse down to about fifty-two thousand rounds a year, which would be a dramatic contraction from what we're seeing currently. And it's probably an overly pessimistic view. So you can see here, the, this is the graph of the fund balances as they would grow or contract over time in all these different scenarios that we are considering. And in the vast majority of them, you see a healthy growing fund balance. And minimally, you see them able to sustain a sustained level of fund balance and not be burning down our reserves over time to support the debt service. So long story short, we believe we can afford this. We believe it's good business and that it's self-fundable through the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. We're also going to continue to maintain focus on affordability for the community. This is a quick snapshot of some of the affordability efforts that we've been trying to maintain for the community. We want to be a community course, not necessarily a destination course. And make this an asset for the average citizen that wants to come play golf. So some of the things we're going to continue to do, maintain that four dollar per resident discount for a full round of golf, maintain affordable junior rate to keep growing the game, all sorts of other things that we're doing that some courses do, some courses don't. Having an early bird rate, having a nine-hole rate, having a twilight rate, having a discount card or a membership. Those are all practices that we plan to continue doing to help make sure that we're being a sustainable business, but also being a community asset for our residents. So with that, we're looking for discussion and feedback from the board on two things, one of which is the preferred clubhouse option, option A or option B. And two, positive direction to proceed with finalizing the clubhouse design and then to move forward with the budgetary process for financing the project.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Eisner, your light was on first.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me understand this. This would not incur any money from the city to help you?
The goal is to fully, it's all city dollars. Let's be clear. So this, but the goal is to fully self-fund this through golf course revenues under the Golf Course Enterprise Fund and to not, it's designed with this business plan to not need general fund dollars.
So what would happen to the money that we depend on, that we make from the golf course now that we would not be getting? Because you would be putting it back into the golf clubhouse.
Currently, there's not been a lot of dependency of the general fund on the golf course in the past because, you know, it was mostly paying off old debts. So that wasn't money that was going in to support general fund operations. So right now, the general fund is not like dependent on golf course revenues for financing.
Okay, what is the break-even point that you would need? Like, what is the maximum amount of funds that you can take in if you have people golfing twenty-four, you know, constantly? Because there's got to be a, you know, I know you have here the number sixty-eight thousand nine hundred. Could we just make seventy thousand? Can we make seventy-five thousand? Where is that number?
I, we've talked to Howard about this quite a bit. I mean, if you're just going slap bowl and you're operating at maximum capacity through the summer, which is probably not terribly realistic, you're probably looking at like, maybe like ninety thousand rounds a year.
Well, I mean, it can get that high, but that's. As, I'm Howard Hunt, by the way, the golf course manager. Most of you know me. As Tommy said, yeah, if you wanted to max it out, you could probably get ninety thousand rounds on an eighteen hole golf course, not real realistic.
What is that in money?
Oh, in money? Well, then if you go from sixty eight to ninety, let's say, if that is attainable, you're you're looking at a what thirty percent increase?
Okay, so this.
So we did, we did two point three million last year, was thirty percent of that.
Well, you you kind of answered all of my questions, except did you think of retiring this golf course over to a Hollywood movie from back in the sixties? Because I was, I was in there and it was quite, it was quite a relic. I'm sorry.
It's very historical.
And let me just give you mine, I I would go for Plan A. I think it looks better, I think the back area looks more enticing. It actually looks more like the Palm Hallberg. You know, I haven't seen their updated, you know, golf course, but I know from the old one, that's where it it looked like A. So where it looked out onto the course, so that's the route I would go. I'm not too much fond of multiple roofs, I don't really care for that look.
And just to answer your earlier question, I actually, we have the business plan spreadsheet up here, I just, we ran, I just put some numbers in. We were planning for about this year, about two point six million dollars in revenues conservatively. Yeah, that's inclusive of the hurricane impacts and things like that. Next year, if we were to go to like, I'd say a hypothetical eighty thousand rounds a year, running it through our anticipated revenue per round, that would be about three point five million dollars in gross revenues. Last year was our record year at two point four, so we think like two point six, two point seven and kind of growing from there is a pretty realistic target.
In in this business plan, did you look into at all catering? And did you put any of those numbers in? Because that could be extra as well.
Yes, we we did factor that in as far as the goal would be to use it as a catering kitchen and have outside catering done for the event space. But we did factor that in and we had an escalation factor for operational costs.
Okay. I I just thank you, it was a great presentation, I appreciate what you did.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. That 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 was a great presentation. I don't know anything about golf, I'm much more of a gym rat. But I think, you know, it's a great idea that that clubhouse is beyond its useful life. So just for the public knowledge, so to date, the money you'd be paying in this new debt service to date had been paid to like to like prior debt, correct? Was it stacking dollars up there or something?
Yes, the the long and short of it was back in the nineties, the course was under, it was totally subbed out as a private operation. And there was a desire and they were paying a certain amount of money back to the city, but not necessarily reinvesting in the course. Over time, the city got a little bit hooked on that. We wanted, previous boards wanted to continue that revenue stream from the golf course enterprise fund back to the general fund. And whether or not the golf course was making that money or not, so it accumulated a debt largely through transfers from golf course enterprise fund back to general fund. And so what we've just been working through the last basically ten years up until about five years ago was paying down that that old debt that was largely from sort of internal city transfers.
Well, I think it's, I I think it's a great idea. I'm definitely also in support of option A and the old Florida look. I definitely think once this is done, I obviously the building is not going to be historic, the design might, but we need to have some kind of a placard there on the golf course to show that we are the oldest municipal golf course in the state of Florida, which which I think is a very important thing. So I I I'm in full support of this and I I I definitely look forward to 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 like your future progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther, Vice Mayor Colianis. Thanks, Tommy, for, let me ask you, did did Ron Herring help you with these numbers?
Ron reviewed all the numbers, but this was developed, the financial model and all that was developed largely in public services with input from our golf professionals.
I didn't think a hurricane grad could do this, but. That was a joke, that was a joke. He went to the University of Miami, so that's why I was making the joke. The, so anyways, on, for this debt service, have you confirmed that interest rate?
We discussed the interest rates with with Ron and we think that's a realistic interest rate.
Okay. And these numbers, these revenue numbers, they include the food service as well? Or these are just rounds of golf?
The financial model is basically, it it's it's a fairly simplified model, but it runs through a gross revenue per round and a gross expenses per round basis. And actually, the expenses might be a little bit overrepresented if we were to have like a reduction pace of pace of play. Because, you know, people are buying less beer, we're going to buy less beer, but that's not built in the model.
So you want an A or B choice on?
We're looking for guidance on that.
Okay, can you stick the side by side A or B option right there? Since we have a big crowd today. Clap if you'd like option A. And how about B?
All right, I I'm for, I'm with A. Thank you.
And that was some community engagement, that was good.
Much easier than a workshop.
Commissioner DiDonato, your light is on?
Yes, I would concur with most of what's being said, I just for friends and giggles. I'd like to know what the different square footage, where's that other two hundred square feet? And there'd be an option B versus option A, just curious.
It's mostly in the interior space and the snack bar and things like that, but you can also kind of see it's, you know, the way we have the sort of protruding
A little bit more.
Building feature there. So and also that was an effort, we were working with the architects on value engineering and trying to control costs. So the option A was sort of a further development of previous designs to help make sure that we're keeping our construction costs down.
Okay, well, now that we've said this, I had the survey. I would certainly go along with option A first, but I just wondered where the extra square footage was. That is self funded, because I've already had two people ask me, why should we spend that money? So that's a, that's a good point.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato. Mr. Kiger, thank you for the presentation. We see the club, the golf course is actually turning a good profit and reinvesting into a nice building that brings some more community around it and stay there for a little bit longer and be around is is a good thing. I like option A. If we could please look at possibly making that snack bar or bar just a little bit bigger. And I mean, just from when I look right here, I just think as a potential to be a little bit bigger for more of a hangout. As well as, are there any locker rooms in this? Do we need locker rooms at all with the way that?
That was an early design choice and and we talked with Howard about that. And, yeah, that's that's a little bit of a something you see more in like private country clubs and things like that. It's a lot less common now in modern, you know, municipal courses and some of the folks, you know, younger folks in particular, not not so keen to go change and shower in public anymore.
Sure, sure, no, and Howard knows best, Howard's done a great job in turning around that golf course and and doing great things over there. And one more thing, just the kitchen, I don't know how big it is, how functional it is, but I I know it comes at a cost point. We could just try to get all the good things in there to make it a fully functional kitchen to its best ability. With pricing, of course, please do. And just some of the renderings inside like the the snack bar area, I know they're just renderings and stuff, but they sort of look like a college cafeteria, a college campus cafeteria thing. If there's a way to make it look a little bit more cozy or warmth for that beautiful building would be nice, so. Yeah.
Fill it conceptual phase, we'll make sure that all that interior trims and things like that are very welcoming.
Perfect, sir. And now, do we have direction from the board? Do we need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the so far rendering of choice A.
There are no further comments for discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes, discussion direct, we are on item twenty four, discussion and direction Duke Energy Wholesale Water Rates. Tommy Kiger, Public Services Director?
All right, so we are going to switch gears. And again, Thomas Kiger, Public Services Director, this time we're talking about utilities. So today, we're again looking for discussion and direction from the board on an item related to our wholesale water rate to the Duke Energy Anglot Power Station. Okay, so a little bit of background about why we're bringing this. We've been very focused on the financial health of the water and sewer utility over the last couple of years. Some of you were here when we were discussing our last big financial updates in twenty twenty three. And for those of you who might not have been here for those discussions, we get, we want to give you a quick snapshot of what we were looking at back in twenty twenty three. So in twenty twenty three, we were looking at our initial no action scenarios under the previous water sewer rates. And it was, it was not looking rosy, we were experiencing lots of inflation and operational costs and construction and things like that. And the effect was that we were, expenses were exceeding revenues and we were burning down our reserves and there was a scenario that we were looking at where we were going to miss our fund balance targets as early as twenty twenty four and potentially have negative fund balances in the water sewer enterprise fund as soon as twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. And you can see right over here, those are the fund balances, these little columns and the red is negative, so that's not good. So we update, we've taken the action since then and we've been focusing again on the financial health of the utility for those reasons. This included updating water and sewer rates on a two year basis in twenty twenty four and also finding other ways to improve revenues while minimizing cost to citizens. So what have we been doing to try and control those rates while generating revenues to support a healthy water and sewer utility? We've done some cost cuts, we were able to find a some regulatory mechanisms that allowed us to eliminate the need for a costly injection well that was required by emerging regulations back in twenty twenty one. That results in a capital cost savings, about five million dollars to the utility. We also cut a one point two million dollar ops building for the distribution staff and replaced it with a lower cost modular building. We delayed lots of capital projects, we cut operational funds, we've been focusing on other operational efficiencies like investing in solar to reduce our electrical costs at the R O plant. Revenue recovery, focusing on the health of the meters, which are the cash register for the utility, make sure that everyone's paying their fair share for what they're actually using and that we're not missing revenues there. And also on alternative funding, so this year, we're on the list for a two point two million dollar grant award through Resilient Florida to fund a really critical electrical resiliency project for the wastewater plant. We're also anticipating some significant settlement dollars through participation in the three M and DuPont PFOS or Forever Chemical settlements or which are nationwide. And we're getting ready to participate in some additional settlements there. And while the other, so we've been looking for those dollars in a way that doesn't impact the average citizen before we come back for anything else. And so one of the things we looked at was our unique wholesale rate to Duke Energy. So background on this, this is fairly unique, this is a one off wholesale rate that is only used by Duke Energy. So back in twenty twelve, the city prior to construction of the R O water plant, signed a wholesale water contract with Progress Energy, which is now Duke, prior to construction of the water plant. And we are now their current sole source water provider for the Duke Anvo Power Station. These Duke Energies has a special wholesale rate that's established by this contract. And it basically says that the cost for providing water shall not be greater than the actual cost to produce and deliver the potable water. So basically, we're looking at the cost of production, treatment and conveyance of that water. So that includes things like in the contract, like direct operating costs such as salaries, chemicals, power, those sorts of things, operating reserves and bond payments, and also repair and replacement, replacement costs, which includes some capital. It also has some other terms like the cost can't be higher than the charge made to any other city customers, so we can't, you know, basically says we can't gouge Duke higher than by charging them a much higher rate than the average rate payer. And there's also some other nuts and bolts things in there, like thirty day noticing and we're allowed to determine this rate from time to time at a city commission meeting. So because of all this, staff identified the Duke wholesale rate as one opportunity to try and realign revenues with current operating costs without impacts the average resident. This wholesale rate has not been evaluated since twenty seventeen. And as many folks know, there's been a lot of just changes in the markets since twenty seventeen, so it was really time to catch up and look at those numbers again. So we worked with Stan Tech, which is our rate consultants, to complete an updated study similar to what we did in twenty seventeen to examine the total wholesale cost of water treatment and conveyance. And we've got some results. So you can see here, we've looked at the total cost of water supply and treatment as well as the cost of transmission. And we separated out eligible and ineligible costs under these, under this particular contract. And it basically came to about seven dollars and twenty fifty two cents per thousand gallons. So Duke Energy is currently paying five dollars and fifty, I'm sorry, five dollars and thirty two cents and some change per thousand gallons, which you'll notice is less than the cost of conveyance and treatment because that's advanced more rapidly than the contracts been updated due to electrical and chemical costs and things like that. So the staff is proposing that the B O C update the Duke Energy wholesale rate from five dollars and thirty two cents and change per thousand gallons to seven dollars and fifty two cents to reflect the full cost of treatment and conveyance to provide this wholesale water service. We did look at a comparison of nearby utilities to make sure that we weren't doing anything that would be dramatically out of line with the market that might cause Duke to reevaluate who their wholesale water supplier is. F G U A is the nearest utility to the Duke Anglot Power Station. Their wholesale rate is currently over ten thou, ten dollars. And Pasco County does not really have any service near them and their wholesale rate's a little bit lower, they're a beneficiary of a lot of the grant awards through Tampa Bay Water from the Water Management District, so their wholesale rate's a little bit lower at four dollars and eighty cents. And they have a different structure than than nearby utilities, they have a different financial situation. So we're not seeing this as something that would cause Duke to want to reevaluate their water supply options, we think this would be reasonable based on current market conditions. All in all, Duke Energy uses about sixty two million gallons of water annually, they're our largest customer. And so we want to make sure that we're charging them the full cost of treatment and conveyance and not losing money on this operation. And ultimately, this will increase utility revenues by over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year with, that will not be borne by by the average resident. So for next steps, we're looking again on B O C guidance to move forward with the updated pricing proposal. And if directed, staff will then, you know, prepare the Duke Energy pricing notice according to the contract terms and then prepare a resolution for adoption at a future board meeting. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question in regards to residential rates versus, you know, the rates Duke Energy wholesale rates that they they are supplied water to. A comment was made moments ago about a resident who had turned his household water off. Yet he's still, after turning off his his water with the city, still receives a bill from the city. And that bill has accumulated over time, which would mean residents in effect aren't being sold wholesale water and it's not a rate. This, for instance, if Duke Energy would turn its water supply off, would they be sent a bill for something that they're not using? The residents are in effect not being given a supply and rate bill, they're be giving a a fee or or a bill, a levy of such. And I feel as though if we're going to charge the residents for something that they're not getting, if they don't take water from the city, why should they receive a bill? It doesn't seem as though it's it's equating properly uniformly. Not quite sure I understand if I could get that clarified, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, so we do have readiness to serve fees and we have, you know, special rates for folks for like seasonal residents and things like that that have temporary, you know, disruptions to service when they like go back up north and things like that. Realistically, this is a power plant and I'd have to go back and look at the contract, but you know, because this is a special rate that's established, but I think it would be exceedingly unlikely that Duke Energy would shut down all of their water use to the power plant for an extended period of time. So it's a little bit of a different business condition that wouldn't be captured by the normal rate structure, that's why we have this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, are there any I T comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Commissioner Eisner with questions.
Did you say Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the lines here says, costs shall not be greater than the actual cost to produce and deliver the potable water. And on another line, it says, costs must not be higher than any charge made to. And on another line, it says, "Costs must not be higher than any charge made to any other city customer." Are they talking about commercial customer or are they talking about residential customer?
That would be all customers. So again, all customers, so across classes.
So as city residents, we get constant increases, and it also states here, "The actual cost will be determined from time to time by the city commission at a public meeting." But you also claim that we haven't seen an increase from 2017 to 2025. So that was eight years that the commission never got to see anything. So we were giving them water at a loss for eight years. Is that correct? I know you don't want to answer that, but it's a true question.
I would have to go back and look at the historical rates and the historic cost of water production. We have been escalating this rate based on the, you know, typical annual percent increases in our that we the board has been adopting, so it hasn't been unchanged. But we haven't reevaluated the basis for evaluating that wholesale water cost. So that's part of the reason why we did this update a few years ago, was the operational costs were increasing faster than the historic rate increases had been. And we found this, and now we're trying to catch up on this rate as well. Does that make sense?
Why do we not increase them as need be when our increases go up? Do they give us the same cost for their electrical energy and electricity and don't give us an increase? I'm not going to ask you questions that are easy, so.
Sure. That's why we're here. We're here to update it. This is something that's been identified. We want to stay more on top of this and make sure that we're getting our full cost recovery back, and that's what we're proposing.
But I just don't understand why we're playing fair in the sandbox and they're not. Let me let me say it a different way. We have to lock in our rates with them and charge them X amount. They don't lock in their rates with us, and they charge whatever it is. So when electricity costs more, they increase it. When water costs us more, we haven't increased it in eight years.
Yeah, so that might be something that we could consider in the future, is perhaps we could have this evaluated on an annual basis. And so we make sure we keep up with that as we move forward. I will say there is a, yeah, this is a significant revenue source for us as our largest customer, but there also is a cost to doing these studies. So we don't want to do them overly often, but if the it was if we were directed by the board, I think we could evaluate this on an annual basis to make sure that we're keeping up, moving forward.
So it could be our largest customer, but it also could be our largest loss. It says here that actual costs will be determined from time to time by the city commission. I know in the last three years, nobody's asked us anything about this, and I know that inflation has run rampant, and it had to cost us more because we turned over a bigger bill to all the residents. Why didn't we turn it over to Duke Energy?
I will say, we have been increasing their rate at the whatever annual percent increases. We've been adjusting the rates for all customers, so. But because this is a unique contract and because this is a unique rate, we're doing a full catch-up on the wholesale, on the total cost of production to do that step function and bring everything up to where it's at. And hopefully, moving forward, the goal would be to keep those in line.
How long do we lock into this 7.5 per gallon?
This would go into effect upon adoption, and with no action from the board, it would continue to be increased at the annual rate of increase that's adopted by the board for all rates. Like I said, or if directed, we could bring this back to you on an annual or semi-annual basis as a checkup.
I'm not trying to pick on you. I know. It's just, when I read this, it just didn't sit pretty with me. Anytime I see something that's sitting stagnant for eight years, and I can tell you that everybody in this room has not seen a stagnant electrical bill, I'll tell you that. So, you know, here we are, and we're their only supplier, correct?
Yes, by contract.
So we have a monopoly on this, and we're treating them like, you know, as you said, they're our biggest, you know, vendor or supplier or whatever you want to call it. But, you know, I don't understand why we've agreed to just give it to them at cost. I mean, next week, these filters from the RO could go up in cost. Do we eat that?
No, the goal would be to, again, continue to adopt, you know, rates that are inclusive of all costs. And perhaps with further direction, if the board, you know, wished to explore renegotiation of the contract at some point in the future, that's also something we could explore.
Well, I don't want to go on time to time to time, as was written. What I want to go on is as as the world turns, as things get more expensive, I want it to be turned over to them, because it shouldn't be turned over to the residents, because that's who's paying for it. We get hit, they don't. And I would like you to let me know down the road, I don't want to put you in the spot, when we've given them increases and how much it was from 2017 to the current 2025, because in my knowledge, we have not given them an increase at all. So we've been losing every single year.
That's exactly why we're bringing this back, and I want to assure you that in this study, we're not treating Duke Energy with kid gloves.
If I could interject, Commissioner, you brought up some great points. I want to get to Commissioner DiDonato real fast.
I'm done.
When there's that motion made, if you want to include evaluation every year to, you know, look at that, please include it with the motion, and I think that would be great. Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat some of the things Commissioner Riser brought out. The first thing I saw when I read the backup was, okay, well, what's our discount rate with electricity for the city? That was the very first thought in my mind. I don't have a question that we should be charging them what our costs are. We should not be supplementing that, and I think they would agree with me, that they shouldn't have to supplement theirs for us. So I would like to see this rectified and make it reciprocal. I have no problems giving you a break, you give me a break. And right now, I'm with Commissioner Riser. ICS giving him a, giving them a break, but at this point, unless I missed it somewhere, they aren't giving us one. So I have no problems going forward with what we've got. And in fact, I would ask Mr. Salzman, maybe we should look at if there's, like from 2017, how much have we lost because of that? And certainly, whenever the the energy bill or negotiations come again, that needs to be a major factor. As I see it right now, they owe us more than we owe them. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's the way I see it.
Great points, Commissioner DiDonato. Vice Mayor, just in case, did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
So what does what does StanTech charges for that study?
That's a good question. I want, I want to say it was in the $10,000 to $20,000 range, but I would have to check that.
And if we do it annually, do we have the expertise within the city to be able to calculate those rates, that rate increase without StanTech?
Typically, we use the rate now, the because this is like contractual negotiations, we use, you know, basically the the financial expertise of StanTech to make sure that everything's defensible and like would hold up in court as like our expert witnesses and our subject matter experts. So that's that's best practice is to have external rate analysis.
So if we did this annually, we'd have to pay StanTech $10,000 to $12,000 every year to do this?
And the cost might come down if we're doing annual updates, but there would be some costs to the city that we could explore.
But once the, once it's, you got the format, why couldn't we do it internally?
That would be something we could look into, and we would have to probably discuss that with the with the finance department to see their level of comfort on that as far as doing that level of analysis for for contractual negotiations.
All right, thank you. Okay, there was, there was a lot said from the commission with this. One of the commission members can make a motion with conditions or amendments they'd like to be seen in into it. That would be great. Move the item forward?
I'll make one unless Mike wants to do it. I would move that we go ahead and certainly charge them what our costs are. And I would also like to find out why we, they aren't discounting what the city pays for its electric bill. So I don't know how we would word that, Mr. Attorney, but I think it need, both of them need to be looked into, and that's what I would, I would move that we do.
I mean, that it's kind of a general, general direction motion, so I think that's fine the way it is. I mean, we can be directed to look into those things. It doesn't necessarily have to be as part of the.
Okay.
So is that classified as a motion, then?
Well, the general direction does not usually classify as a motion, so I would ask for a different, clear.
Do you mind if I take that? Well, he's going to have to remove that motion.
I can't really understand your statement.
Can you withdraw your motion or?
Well, what do you, what do you, what do you say?
Streamline this motion.
I'm trying. Certainly, if the attorney can give me the words, that's fine. I just wanted it to be reciprocal, and I think it should be for the people.
Those are, I mean, no.
I take, I make a motion to approve item 24 and to give, for the BOC to give staff to move forward with updating pricing proposal and prepare Duke Energy pricing notice per contract and prepare an adoption resolution.
I think that's good, Mayor. But you also want to go back from 2017. That's a direction. That's direction to the department. I think what the mayor is proposed, motion covers what what we're looking for. The rest of it is.
So moved.
Okay, you you seconded it, no?
So that's somebody has to motion besides the mayor.
The mayor can't make a motion, but is that a suggestion of a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
That the mayor suggested motion.
Yes. And I say so moved.
Second.
Just point clarification. So we're saying what I'm saying, don't you see it differently? I mean, we're going to look at the electrical.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Long as we do that, I'm.
Commissioner, the rest is direction for staff to do those things and bring it back for the commission.
Right. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Yes, we're now going to ordinance and resolutions.
Mayor, can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Kiger. He's, I guess you've been a director for about a year now.
Yes, sir.
And this is obviously some, a ball that got dropped, I think, and for him looking for ways to to look at our revenue sources and cut expenses, I just want to acknowledge him for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I know it's a tough, tough agenda item, but this was a, you've just been public service director not in about two years or so, if less, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 25, Resolution 2025-26, ratification of executive orders 25025-22 and 25, or and 2025-24, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Helene. For the attorney, can you please read the resolution?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2025-26, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order 2025-22, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to March 25, 2025, and ratifying executive order 2025-24, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to April 1, 2025, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are no comments.
Thank you, IT. No comments physically, okay? The chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-26.
So moved.
Vager.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item 26, Resolution 2025-27, resolution of executive orders 2025-23 and 2025-25, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Milton. City Attorney, can you please just read the title?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2025-27, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order 2025-23, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to March 25, 2025, and ratifying executive order 2025-25, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to April 1, 2025, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve item 26, Resolution 2025-27.
So moved.
Vager.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item 27, Ordnance 2025-05, establishing section 12.5 through 7 of the Code of Ordinances, operating hours for city parks. City Attorney, can you please read the title? And this is the second reading.
Yes, Mayor. Ordnance 2025-05, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing section 12.5-7 of the Code of Ordinances, operating hours for city parks, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. That is ordinance 2025-05, read by title only on second reading. This has previously been published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 12, 2025.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve item 27, Ordnance 2025-05.
So moved.
Vager.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item 28, Resolution 2025-24, reallocation of Pinellas County HMGP funds for Hurricane Helene and Milton to Elevate Florida program. City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2025-24, resolution of Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, regarding the reallocation of Pinellas County HMGP funds for Hurricane Helene and Milton to, to the Elevate Florida program.
Thank you so much, city attorney. And we have our project administration, Bob Robertson, and also our great grant project specialist writer, PJ Herbert. Can you please go over the item a little bit?
Yes, we have a new program after Helene and Milton. It's called Elevate Florida. It's to help with residential mitigation. They've combined funds from HMGP and from their SWIFT current. Basically, what we're asking the board to do is tomorrow, there's going to be a vote with the Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group. We're going to get funds from our hazard mitigation grant somewhere in the area of like $416 million between Helene and Milton. What they're suggesting is we can either give all of that funding to the Elevate Florida program, which will help the residents directly, or we keep the money for ourselves, for the city, with the possibility that you may be able to fund projects that are on their priorities, priority list. Right now, we only have 3.2 million in projects on that list, whereas we have 34 applicants already for Elevate Florida just from Tarpon Springs alone. We just need direction on how to vote tomorrow, whether we want to give all of that HMGP allocation to Elevate Florida, or if we want to say no, we'd like to keep it in Pinellas County, thinking that maybe we'll get some of our projects funded through that.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Questions from the the commission to staff? Commissioner Eisner, your lights on?
Thank you, Mayor. The funds that would go to the residential rising, does that go to the residents or does that go to the corporations that are buying up these properties left and right?
Note, that goes to the residents. That goes to the Elevate Florida program. They accept the applications from the residents. They make a determination on who's qualified, who's not qualified, and then they work directly with the resident.
Okay. My next question would be, do we have, with the amount of money that we're supposed to get, does that cover the 30-some-odd people that we have, or would we still be short?
If we covered every single person in Pinellas County, we would still be short. That's, we only got 300 million for Elevate Florida. There's over 1,500 applications statewide. So even if we put all 416 million into Elevate Florida across the state, it still wouldn't fund every single applicant. But we would only, we would still get all of ours back to Pinellas County. Our 416 million would only go to Pinellas County residents.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. I was referring to the people of just Tarpon.
Tarpon Springs would fall under the Pinellas County umbrella, so however they rank those residents, because Elevate Florida is going to look at all of those applicants. because Elevate Florida is gonna look at all of those applications from Pinellas County, and then they're gonna prioritize those. So I can't speak directly whether or not only Tarpon Springs residents are gonna get funded.
So of the 35, we may get 10? We may get nothing?
I can't speak on that, because Elevate Florida would make that determination.
Okay. I'm just asking because, you know, we could be voting for something and get nothing out of it.
Correct.
I know that if we try to use it for the city, we have more of a chance of getting nothing, I'll tell you that, because they're not in the gift of giving. So, I mean, the only thing I would do is, I would like to see it go to the residents, to help them, you know, lift the homes. This is something exactly that happened after Hurricane Sandy in New York. It was New York Rising, and I was expecting it to come here to be Florida Rising. But I'd like to see that it does go to the homeowner, because otherwise, if there is another flood, you know, that's when FEMA starts shutting you down and saying, "We're not gonna insure you anymore." I think you only get two X's on your page, and then it's you're on your own, so.
Yes.
I know that's not a good thing, so. Okay, that's the route I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go with it going to the resident.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, my questions would be, it seems like that if we took our portion, which is 4 million and something, that directly to us, then we can make sure that more of our people are taken care of. Is that the correct assumption?
Well, that 416 million is gonna come back to just Pinellas County. And then, based upon how Elevate Florida ranks all of the applications just from Pinellas County, I mean, the chances are that there's going to be at least Tarpon Springs residents somewhere in those 1,500 applications from Pinellas County. We have 34 of those.
Well, I'm more interested in how we can make sure that Tarpon gets its share of that to our people.
Well, Elevate Florida has criteria that they base it upon, and I don't know, I'm not, I don't have access to every application, so I don't know how they're gonna prioritize that. I know one of the priorities is it has to be, or it doesn't have to be, they're prioritizing primary residents, not so much those that use a home in Tarpon Springs as their secondary residence. I'm not sure how they're gonna rank those. It's a brand-new program. I'm not sure, you know, if they have everything in place as to how they're gonna rank it, so I can't make any guarantees as far as how they're gonna rank.
What would be our share, then, if we were to say we want it for Tarpon people? Is that an option? I don't even.
No, it's not an option. The only other thing we could vote on is that we're gonna keep the HMGP money, the Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group, then would say, okay, well, we're gonna rank all of our projects on this list. They score it, and then depending on how we score with our three projects, we may or may not see any funding from that either.
Where's the win for us?
That's what you have to decide as a board.
That's what I'm asking you. Where's the win? We have no guarantee if we go into this.
There's no guarantee either way, no, sir.
Well, is there a way for us to win too, where more of our people are covered? That's what I'm asking.
No, there's, I mean, there's no way, unless Elevate Florida, there's no guarantees that they're gonna give all 34 of our residents the funding. It's just gonna go back to Pinellas County.
It sounds like it's either gonna be a lottery pick for the residents, or a lottery pick for capital improvement projects wherever we put the money, so.
I would just rather we had some control over who gets what. That's all I'm after.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato. Vice Mayor Colianis?
So PJ, based on the way you, the tonality of your voice when you were giving that presentation, you seem to be leaning towards Elevate Florida, right?
I don't have a preference either way.
You kind of were going there. But, okay, so you don't know how any of this money is gonna get apportioned, right?
No.
So if the funds, so the choice is, we do Elevate Florida, which then goes, does not come through the city, goes directly to residents?
Correct.
If we have the funds go to Pinellas County, we don't even know how Pinellas County is gonna give us our share, right?
You may not see any money from that at all, depending on how they rank all the projects. That's correct.
When you say how they rank the projects, so let's say that St. Pete got hit harder than we did.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So the money going to Pinellas County could end up being used in St. Pete, not any of it funnel over here.
I will say St. Pete got their own allocation. St. Pete is not included in that Pinellas County, because St. Pete got hit so hard that they got their actual own allocation. The rest of us are fighting for the rest of the pie.
So why wouldn't we get?
Yes, the question's.
Why wouldn't we get our share if it came straight to Pinellas County?
We should, I mean.
Especially with St. Pete out of the game, because we know they got hit harder than.
You mean with HMGP or with Elevate Florida?
The direct, not Elevate.
The Elevate Florida?
No, not Elevate.
Oh, HMGP?
Yeah.
They rank all of the projects. That funding is different. St. Pete got their own Elevate Florida funding. They didn't get HMGP funding by themselves. They have to go into all of us with the prioritized list through HMGP.
So again, I'm asking, since you're our, maybe it's more of a Bob Robertson question, but which of these choices give us the best odds of funds going to our residents?
Elevate Florida.
Okay. And you gave me your answer.
Thank you. City Manager, your light came on?
Yeah, I just wanted to question, maybe muddy the water a little more. So if we, if the board were to tell the staff to vote to keep the water for our projects, keep the money for our projects, but all the other delegates vote to Elevate Florida, it'll still go to Elevate Florida, is that correct?
That is correct. It's a majority vote tomorrow for the LMS Working Group. So even if Tarpon Springs votes that we're gonna keep the money for HMGP, and every other jurisdiction in Pinellas County says, "Nope, we want it to go to Elevate Florida," it's gonna go to Elevate Florida. We just need to know how we're gonna vote as a city, how we want our funds to go.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Eisner, make your comments, and then we'll get a motion going.
Okay. So I did want to answer, Vice Mayor, I think the whole program was $813 million, and they got theirs, and I think we have that 400-some-odd for us. But my question is, who makes the determination? Is it the Pinellas County Commissioners that are gonna do this at their meeting? Where the money gets distributed? Will it be at Forward Pinellas?
For which funding? Elevate?
For our, yeah, for Elevate.
For Elevate, that's a whole separate program through FDEM. They are their own separate division. It's a brand-new program. They are going to solely decide who gets that money. The cities and the counties will have nothing to do with that.
Do they like Greek food?
I mean, we could throw it out there.
I couldn't resist. I just wanted to know.
Each individual homeowner will apply directly.
Excuse me, I just wanted to know if there's any shot at having Forward Pinellas make this decision, or whether the county commissioner is gonna make it. You know, I don't know. How do you justify this? How do they, you know, just on a vote, okay, we all vote, we want the residents to use it. Now, how do they distribute that?
Elevate Florida. If we decide to, if everybody tomorrow decides to give the money to Elevate Florida, Elevate Florida will look at every single residence, application, prioritize it, and decide who they're gonna fund and who they're not gonna fund. As far as HMGP, that's through the LMS Working Group, and that's a panel of people through Pinellas County. They have the prioritized list. They score it, which is how we got scored high enough last year with our Sponge Docks Vault Project through Adalia. But there's a lot of projects on that list now, because there is so much money out there.
So they don't go by the population?
No.
And they don't go by the amount of damage each town took?
No.
Or the volume of homes that are damaged?
No.
It's like throwing a dart at a donkey, huh?
Commissioner, please, if we can get a motion going, and we'll have to take a break, because we're gonna have a long agenda item coming up. Thank you. I'd rather support it going to the Elevate Florida. There's 35 applicants from Tarpon Springs, and we get a percentage of them that get this program, that would be a huge blessing. We're helping out everyday people. If we can, all of them, that would be amazing. And hopefully, we could just, you know, let people know about this program, sign up for it, and that's why I want to support the Elevate Florida program. So with that said, the chair will entertain a motion to approve Item 28, Resolution 2025-24, for reallocation of Pinellas County HMGP funds for Hurricane Helene and Milton to the Elevate Florida Program.
So moved. Second.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt for a moment? There is, today, we just stayed on a webinar about Elevate Florida, and residents only have until April 11th to apply for that funding. So if they are interested in pursuing that kind of funding, then they need to go on, they can contact me, or Bob, or anybody here at City Hall. We can get them set up to apply for those funds.
If we can hit a nice, hard social media campaign for the rest of this week.
Karen's been great about that.
At least for the rest of this week.
Yep.
And we'll just pump it out there and try to get it going. If there are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato? Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. All right, we're going to take a, we're gonna take an eight-minute break, okay? We're gonna come back at 8:52. Everybody be ready. We got a nice agenda item coming up. [Music] 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 Temporary Application 24-85 First Reading. And, um, City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance 2025-01, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 4, Special Regulations, Section 56.05, Mobile Food Dispensing Vehicles, Temporary, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this Ordinance. That is Ordinance Number 2025-01, Read by Title Only on First Reading. Publication in the Tampa Bay Times was February 5th, 2025.
Thank you, City Attorney. And now we have our City Planner, Ms. Vincent, who will give the presentation?
Mayor, I'll just lead it off.
Go ahead.
Just to let you, the Commission know, you know, this first came up during the hurricanes. We waived a lot of our rules for RVs and shipping containers and food trucks was one of them. So I became aware of them. And so we looked at the food truck ordinance. I knew there was some concern about, um, local businesses and brick and mortar. So we came up with something where the, um, we think it's a compromise, where the trucks would, could only be invited by a brick and mortar business that's currently existing and could meet a list of requirements such as not violating their parking requirements and no generators and, you know, it has to hook up to the building and so forth. And, and that limited, actually limited the number of spaces or it could actually be based on alcohol permit, um, to where there would only be a couple spaces down, two, literally two spaces at the docks, which I think would allow for, um, the donuts, Lamonti's Donuts. We've received quite a bit of support for them being able to vent at the docks. Uh, this would allow for a couple locations for them to do that. And to provide, um, our recommendations, provide a sunset provision such that after a year, you would be forced actually to review this and see how it went. Um, and see if it's something you want to modify, continue, or repeal. Additionally, the Board has the ability throughout the year at any given meeting to, uh, roll back or repeal any ordinance that you pass. So with that, um, Planning Director adds a more formal presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Ms. Vincent, our City Planning Director?
Uh, good evening. Well, it seems it's been a while since I've been here. Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. Um, I'll just go through a very high-level overview of the ordinance. We have some maps and exhibits that hopefully can answer questions. Um, and we'll do our best to explain this. So just a little, um, history, um, most recently, um, in 2020, the state, kind of how we got here, the state adopted some rules under state law that basically said that we couldn't prohibit food trucks. So we had to put something in our ordinance to regulate them. So that led to the ordinances, uh, 2020, um, dash 22 and O2, um, where we established them as a temporary use. We had a couple of different categories. Um, these have been further amended, um, uh, in 2022 again to allow some additional multi-day food trucks for tempor, as a temporary use. Um, and then in January, we came in front of the Board to discuss potential updates to allow some flexibility. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed a first draft of that ordinance and ultimately recommended denial. Some of the, some of the issues that were brought about, uh, brought up during that planning, first Planning and Zoning Board hearing, uh, was again, potential competition with bricks and mortar restaurants, um, potential for occupying required parking, potential impacts on neighbors from generators. Um, the, and then some other possibilities or some compromise things were brought about that the City Manager talked about, you know? Can we restrict them to foods or drinking establishments? Um, and, and we also even talked about, you know, providing specific, you know, you could remove certain areas, um, if you, from the ordinance as a whole. With that, we did do a redraft of the ordinance and we went back to the Planning and Zoning Board and we got a recommendation of approval, the two members dissenting. So what I'm gonna present is actually what the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed at their February meeting. Um, the red font indicates changes that were presented to, that took place along the way. Um, so the major changes to the ordinance would, you know, allow, again, two trucks, um, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. The, the truck has to be accessory to a legal primary use and can only operate when that primary business is open. So even though you have a 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM window, if that primary business that wants to have a truck there, um, is only open until 8 o'clock at night, then the truck would have to shut down. So you have to follow and kind of mirror the primary business. Uh, we did put in a requirement requiring, um, that they operate with battery or electric service. So no generators would be allowed. Um, they would not be permitted on vacant land or on improved land. And I'll consider a parking lot, you know, a legally established parking lot as improved land unless that doesn't have permit restroom facilities. So you must have restroom facilities for patrons. Um, for multi-day events, um, where the truck would remain on the property, um, does still require a temporary use, uh, review by the Technical Review Committee. So, um, the, the, the ordinances that, um, that we're talking about, the changes would, oh, the truck cannot stay on a property. In the normal course of business, if business A wants to bring a food truck in or allow them to come on the property, they, they can't park there and stay there overnight. They have to come and go. Unless you have a multi-day event, you know, approval as a temporary use. So we, we currently allow, in the industrial, the highway business and commercial plan development, we allow, you know, like Lowe's, they can have a food truck come on the property. We already have this set up in the code. So what this, uh, ordinance does is it expands, uh, to all the non-residential zoning districts. And I'll call them the traditional zoning districts. This is outside the special area plan. Um, we expanded those to include all non-residential districts. Within the special area plan and the SMART code, and I'll have a map that will show this. We, we identified specific transect zones where they, they could operate. Um, and we put a restriction that you must have an alcohol license to serve on-premise consumption. So what that looks like on the maps, then? So the, the areas that are colored in red, these are our traditional zoning districts. So we're not talking about the docks and we're not talking this about the special area plan in the downtown. These are areas where you can come and go, you can operate your food truck. Under the, under the rules, um, the primary business just has to have an occupa, or a business tax receipt, um, stating that, you know, they, they're allowing trucks on the property. Um, so this is where they can come and go between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, uh, with no tie to an alcohol license. Within the special area plan, which is what this map is, so everything that you see in color here, um, those are the areas where they would be allowed in the special area plan. I want to call attention, there's a couple of transect zones in here. The downtown Tarpon Avenue and the Spring Bayou District that we excluded because there's really no room on this, you know, on this section of Tarpon Avenue. And this is like just really residential property here. So we excluded those. Um, so then the, we, the requirement that you must have an on-premise consumption for alcohol is represented by these dots that you see on the map. And I want to call attention, there's a green and there's red. A green dot is a restaurant that has a special food service license, meaning their alcohol license is tied to a requirement that they have to have, make 51% of their sales in food. These are restaurants that also have an alcohol license, but they're primarily restaurants. Logically, they're probably not going to be interested in having a food truck because they need to demonstrate to DBPR and the state that their revenue is 51% is coming from their food sales. Um, so the red dots are those alcohol-serving establishments that are not special restaurant licensed. So just wanted to provide clarity of what you're looking at. And I'll zoom in a bit. So if you look in, looking at just the Sponge Docks area, and it's a little hard to see, but this green outline, these are the properties that are in the Sponge Docks Character District that are in the special area plan. The dots represent alcohol-serving establishments that have been further classified. And, and these are, these are just the ones, we kind of did a spot check. These are the ones that actually have space available to park a food truck. So the ones that are in blue, those are, those already have the, the food truck that is tied directly to the restaurant under the 5606 ordinance. So these are kind of all, they, they have their own branded food truck that is the same as the restaurant. The ones that are in yellow are the special service, uh, the 51% sales from food licenses. So really, you've got two places, as, uh, the City Manager alluded to. You've got the Bridge Lounge and you've got Wine at the Docks as potential locations where if you're tied to an alcohol license, where you could have a food truck and you have space available. Um, this pink one is a current application that's pending that may turn blue. It's for a permanent food truck. So this is what, as it's drafted now, this is what, this is your limiting factor. You really would logically have about two places where you could have a food truck. These other special restaurant ones could, but there's no incentive for them to have a food truck. If we remove the alcohol service requirement for the Sponge Docks, this, this is a theoretical map. These are all locations where there's a primary use that, um, where you could invite, that has space available. We have not verified bathrooms and things of that nature. But we wanted to present a realistic, you know, look at where you could potentially have food trucks if you remove the alcohol service requirement, um, in the Sponge Docks area. And then this is a, um, the rest of the special area plan. I know this is a little hard to see. If you want to look closer, I can zoom in. Uh, identifying the on-premise alcohol licenses, again, that have space available for, for a food truck, and also identifying the special restaurant licenses and things of that nature. So again, really, the green dots are the ones that you would most likely, places where you would probably find a food truck, um, operating. So with that, uh, hopefully I've been able to demonstrate what the ordinance shows right, as it's written right now, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from, we're gonna do some questions from the Board first. And now we're gonna go into public comments, because maybe there might be some questions and, uh, that could help. Some comments here in the future. Go Commissioner Eisner.
Uh, thank you, Renee. Um, could you go back to the blue dots?
Yes. So Rusty Bellies, Bayou Bistro, Turtle Island Bar and Grill.
No, no, the, all the blue.
Oh, all the blue dots. Uh, let me, this, this map, yes, okay.
So are these all blue dots attached to brick and mortar locations? Or these are all blue dots that are on just blank pieces of land?
They, we included anything that we knew was a legally established use. So you'll notice that you do have a parking lot here with a blue dot in the middle of it. But that's a legally established parking lot. They don't have any bathrooms. They would have to do things to be able to bring a food truck in. But the, the way that the code is written now, it says you have to be accessory to a legally established use. Doesn't say a building, it says a use. So I do want to be clear about that.
But all the current food trucks all have, uh, attached to a brick and mortar place? So this?
The, you're talking about the, the existing ones?
Existing ones, yeah.
They, those, and those are under the 5606 ordinance. These are the ones that have to be branded and basically be operated by the restaurant. So Rusty Bellies has their own, Bayou Bistro has their own, Turtle Island is their own, their own food truck.
But you don't have a diagram to show which one of these blue dots would be having to be affiliated with a brick and mortar location?
Any, any of these blue dots could potentially, these are where there are legally established use. This is if you remove the alcohol service requirement.
Right.
So theoretically, all of these blue dots could potentially host a food truck where these are, these are places where there's space available and there's a legal use. There's a business tax receipt on the property. Doesn't mean that they have the bathrooms. They have, you know, there's other things that may have to be quantified, but we didn't have time to do all of that. But these are space available uses in the, in the docks, to the best of our ability at this point.
So where I'm going with this is this can be, um, if we saw that we removed the alcohol, but put in that we would have to have it affiliated with a brick and mortar location, this would be a different map. Do you know how many blue dots there would be?
Mean, meaning like, so if you took the parking lots out of play, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So you have to have a physical building on the property?
Correct.
Um, you'll, I mean, you can look at the map and see, I mean, you, you know, there, you know, here, here, there's, you know, the, the parking lots, you know, you would logically probably take the parking lots out. Again, doesn't mean that they, somebody can't do something to meet the requirement down the road. What's a brick and mortar? So, I mean, that's.
Well, my question will also be, they're not allowed to use generators.
No, they're not.
They have to plug in, so you can't plug in in an open land.
Exactly, exactly.
So you need to be attached to a brick and mortar location.
Realistically, you may have to, yes.
So that's why I was curious what those blue dots would be, and we don't have that number.
I don't have that number.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther, your light was on next.
So as proposed now, we, um, it is with the requirement of, of the alcohol sales.
It is, yes.
But thank you. So as of now, it is, it is, well, as proposed, rather, it'll be a requirement for alcohol sales to, to have a food truck there. And that severely diminishes from these blue dots, correct?
It, it does. And I want to point out.
Have that map you can pull up.
This, this map is where they would be allowed, based on the alcohol licenses available right now. These are the locations. And then we further broke those down by, you know, the, you know, the special restaurant license probably aren't, the yellow ones in yellow probably aren't gonna have a truck logically, because they have.
Just under 10 spots, maybe. And you're saying realistically, as proposed tonight, if it passes, as, as, as it's written, realistically, all nine or 10 could, but only realistically two probably would, the Bridge Lounge and Wine at the Docks.
Correct.
And that's what would change there. Anything changed downtown or anything like that, or on the Old Nineteen Corridor?
So downtown, um, let me see, let me flip through here. So again, with the on-premise requirement, we did the same map here. This is a little harder to read. So you do have more, you know, breweries, um, and in this area.
Mm-hmm.
So the green dots, I'm seeing one, two, three, four, um, I'm seeing about four or five.
Lots of those I don't think would really have an incentive.
They may not, they may not.
Sponge City could bring in like, you know, we all love Melly's Donuts, right? Sponge, you know, I can see Sponge City doing that, but they serve actual food.
They serve food. They serve food.
Having like a grilled cheese food truck there, right? So, you know, the Elks Lodge, maybe for a special event. You know, a Rudder Day Brewery, I can see doing that. I don't see ours doing that. They could.
They have a special restaurant license, so they're not going to.
Then under fine, possibly could, okay. That, 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 I think that paints the picture. So in your view, is as proposed tonight, if it passes, this would be kind of a baby step per se.
I would say that, yes.
Opening the floodgates.
It is not.
Whether you like that or not, okay. Um, and then if we don't require alcohol sales, then that would open the floodgates more per se, correct?
It's definitely going to open up the, you know, more locations if you, you know, if you take out the, um, if you remove that restriction. We didn't do the same analysis that we did for the docks for the rest of the special area plan. But, but yeah, logically, there would be, you know, quite a few more places that would.
Revisited annually, as been discussed. Uh, off the top of your head, are you aware of what Dunedin or Oldsmar does?
No.
County at large, the county have any?
County doesn't, they don't regulate food trucks.
It's, they don't have any say in the matter, really. So Palm Harbor is free, just, just.
My understanding is it's pretty wide, pretty, pretty free range at the county, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Renee, do you remember when, um, we met with the city manager and had a conversation about this? About the, uh,
A lot has transpired since then, but.
Remember, I had, we had, the city, I received a letter, uh, email from Irene Mangless. She, it was, uh, addressed to us on January twenty-eighth. We met shortly after that and we had a conversation about, um, about her request. And we talked about the, the uniqueness of her product, right? Remember, don't you remember that? You remember.
I'm sorry, my memory really is like a sin, so.
We were at, um, we were at Karen Lemon's office.
Yeah.
So, um, and I know we don't make ordinances to, um, specifically for one applicant. But, um, you know, we talked about the uniqueness of her product. Um, you know, she sells something that is very cultural, but it's very difficult for a, uh, a bakery to have those because they need to be served fresh, right? They're, they're not something that can sit in a, in a, in a case, right? So we talked about that and then what I, what I asked you was, can we, again, not making an ordinance for one person, but she's an example of someone who should well be on the docks. She's perfect for the docks. Her product is perfect for the docks. So could we draft something that's so narrow that would allow somebody like her to be able to do it without, as Commissioner Banther says, open the flood docks, right?
Well, I think that's what we've done.
And that's my question. Do you feel like what you have, what you guys have created here, uh, obviously not the non-alcoholic one with massive amounts of dots, but the, the, uh, the narrow version with, that really limits it to about two spots on the Sponge Docks currently?
And, yeah, and, and let me say, I, I don't want this to sound like that we're crafting something for, for.
No, no, I, no.
There's a rational nexus between what we're proposing and what we're trying to regulate.
I agree. Again, it, she brought it into our consciousness, right? And then I said, yeah, she's ideal for the docks. We shouldn't draft something for one person.
Right.
But she's an example of something that could be, uh, a welcomed addition to the docks. Okay, so also, um, is it possible, you know, I, I, I watched the planning and zoning meeting and they talked about, you know, they were getting into all, uh, worst-case scenarios of, you know, everybody on the docks gets a liquor license, which isn't really, you know, very practical if that's going to happen. Liquor licenses are extremely expensive. But given, you know, following that thought process of worst case, is it possible, let's say that this, this is a, a temporary ordinance for one year, right? And is it possible, and this is something the city attorney can answer, can we have a window, let's say it's a thirty-day window to apply for this coming year? So that way, everyone will know what is happening right away. And they won't have to sit there and, and expect the possibility of additional ones coming in throughout the, the next eleven months. Is it possible to, to narrow that?
Think you could do that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just for clarity, I think it would have to be tied to the business tax receipt. That's the only real regulating mechanism we have.
But we could have the window for application to be narrow, small. Everyone would know who's, uh, going to be there. They won't have to worry about over the next eleven months, a whole bunch of other, uh, trucks appearing. And that way we can, because we're really, the, the real issue here is mostly the Sponge Docks. And, and I would assume that most of the people here, that that's their biggest concern. So with that, can we, can we draft it where it's narrow like that, also for the application process? So we don't, we don't have any surprises the next eleven months. We don't have to even think about it.
Are you saying that the location, we have to figure out all the trucks they're going to have? Like if they rotate a truck every Saturday night, they got to figure them all out a year?
No, no, the, okay, if, if a food truck is going to be allowed on a property, right? They can make their arrangement.
They would have to apply for a business tax receipt within X amount of days that would cover them for a year to have whatever truck they want come and go.
And then, then they can come and go. It's not like they're, they're not applying, they're not applying every single month. They're just going to apply one time, which gives them the whole year.
Would you, would you want to propose that for just the Sponge Docks area or for the special area plan?
For the Sponge Docks, just for the Sponge Docks.
I'm just going to defer to the city attorney on, you know, if we're getting so narrow and so prescribed that we're, I'm, I'm going to defer to him.
Have to look into it, but I think we could probably draft some kind of requirement, especially if we're isolating it to one area.
Yeah.
I mean, there's justification for doing that. We would just.
Well, it's, it's the cultural, um, nature of that, of that area.
That's something we could do between first and second reading.
Yeah.
Just, I, you know, the only, I guess this is the only caution I would say with that is, I don't guess it's really that much of an administrative burden to try to track that, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, you guys could figure it out.
Yeah.
So are you saying tax receipts for the food trucks themselves or the restaurants?
The business owner.
The business owner.
The primary property owner is going to have to pull a business tax receipt anyway. So they would have to do that within a, some defined timeframe, um, and then.
And that keeps it from getting out of hand, correct?
So, yeah, you would, yeah, I, we would know where they're going to, you know, what locations have been approved and.
That's it.
That's it, you know, so we just got to be cognizant that on day thirty-one or day thirty-five,
They need to, they need to apply, they need to apply early and get their name in and be done with it.
I, I just, I, I.
That, that, that's.
Theoretically, yes, let us, I think we need to probably talk about the logistics of it, you know, between first and second reading.
You guys work out of order, but I think that would be the, I, I would be, I would be good with something like that. But again, we're going to hear from the, from the people. But I think if we can narrow it like that, so that doesn't, there's no, uh, opportunity to get out of hand, but yet it still facilitates at least the two that could possibly be there.
I mean, I, I mean, I'll, I mean, candidly, I just, I, I'll just push back a little bit. I mean, if you're going to keep the alcohol restriction in place, I don't see. I don't see the need for that, but that's, you know, that, that's just my.
Yeah, I want to hear from the rest.
I don't want to make work that.
I want to hear from the rest of the board and I want to hear from, from the residents as well. Thank you.
Make sure Tito.
Excuse me. I, um, concur pretty much with what's been said. I also would like to commend staff and our planning and zoning board because they have put hours and hours and hours into this. And I, I think that all of us up here, at least what I'm hearing, want to be fair about it. But there's some reservations and that's one reason why I think it's being proposed for a year's trial. And we can see what works and what, what we need to consider down the road, those kinds of things. But I too, I would like to hear, uh, from those that would like, they waited this, this hour. And I certainly want to hear from them as well.
Commissioner Eisner, can you be real brief and then I'm going to make a couple of comments and we're going to the public?
Thank you. Um, so there's a couple of things that I did want to say, um, as I've been listening to this. Um, since you have no generators, no overnight, um, you can't have this being open while the stores are closed. You can't be on any empty lots. You need to have toilets, but the toilets do not have to be with your mobile, uh, truck and, and it has to leave every night. Why can't we just change this to be only affiliated with a, only a brick and mortar location? There can't be that many of them. And, and, and I, I think that would open up and allow them to have theirs. Maybe there would be a hot dog stand, um, I don't know. But, you know, there, there wouldn't be inundated and we would remove the stipulation of the alcohol because that's the stickler that we do have. And at the same time, if it, you know, to have it only on a thirty-day, you're talking about making only a thirty-day application. And then you have to stop people from eleven months of, of applying. They'd have to apply, what, the next year? I mean, I, I think we could possibly have a little bit of a lawsuit because we're kind of like, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. So if we put these stipulations in, we, we don't allow it to affect any of the brick and mortar places. Not all the, not, not all the brick and mortar places are going to want to have a food truck there. Uh, right now, we have kiosks there that, that are selling things without, uh, a bathroom, without a, a generator. And then the, the best part is you got to be hooked up to a, somebody's location. So it's not like there's just going to be food trucks everywhere. We don't want a food truck, um, you know, area. We don't want a food truck, um, you know, in the Sponge Docks. We just want just a couple of things for the populace that want to just eat and run and not have to have a sit-down dinner. That's what I see, uh, about this.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Vincent, this sunset rule that potentially if one way or another, any variable situations approved, our earliest, or and this might be city manager, we would come back in a year to review it.
Correct. We, unless you request it earlier, we would agenda it, uh, a year from now for review.
So there is a possibility to request even earlier. Okay, I want to, this, the type of trucks so that, you know, any situation like this arises, we can't, as a city, give licenses a certain amount of different types of food trucks depending on what their food is that they're offering, correct?
We don't license the food trucks themselves. That is, that is reserved to the state. We would only require a business tax receipt from the primary property owner that's hosting the food truck.
So we won't even need a business tax receipt or a business tax number from, for Tarpon Springs for these food trucks?
No.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm focused on the, the blue dots with, you know, any potential situation. And, you know, a lot of these restaurant owners, they have great concern about, um, the floodgates opening. And literally, I mean, if all those dots could be food trucks, it would be pretty unsightly for our community, you know? But at the same time, a lot of these properties, they would really have to improve their properties tremendously to be able to at least just put one food truck on there. Ms. Vincent, how would installing bathrooms on some of these properties to be able to, uh, make the conditions available for these food trucks to be placed on? Do they have to go towards new FEMA height standards or with, with everything that's happened in our community and, you know?
They would, I mean, any bathrooms would have to be able to meet FEMA requirements in one way or another. And there are different methods for that, but, but yes, they would have to be able to, to, to meet that.
So, so some of these parking lots aren't necessarily just going to be able to build on that first, you know, on the concrete?
Not going to slap a porta potty on there and call it a bathroom, no.
Okay, um, is there any way we can restrict a section in, let's just say, the Sponge Docks where the alcohol attachment doesn't have to be included?
Um.
Because a lot of this I see is a lot of the outskirts of the, of this, of, of the, of the docks. You got a lot of these parking lots, a lot of, some of these buildings are, the blue dots are really behind the building, which, you know, the building faces the Deacon East. So you can't, you know, you're going to have to walk behind the building and go get food if there was a food truck there established. So do we have the ability to even condense more the area in which we're talking about? Or not needing alcoholic beverages to be able to attach?
Um, I think there's some, just like, uh, let me flip back to the, when I was talking about, you know, this, you know, so we, you know, we excluded because usually you really can't physically put it, there's nowhere to put a truck on, you know, Tarpon Ave and that particular transit zone. We eliminated that from consideration. So, you know, unfortunately, we don't have as many transit zones up in the Sponge Docks. And that's this area here. So this kind of pinkish color is one transit zone. And then you've got your waterfront transit zones, two or three of those. This is a city-owned property. So, you know, you could potentially say, you know, you could, you could limit it, you know, to a certain transit zone or exclude a certain transit zone. You know, that, you know, that's one way that you could, could do that. Uh, you know, it's, I'm a, to me, it's a little arbitrary, you know? I, I'm a little concerned about just saying, oh, let's just, you know, either take out the whole Sponge Docks Character District out of consideration or, you know, because this is a little too, I just don't, I don't have a better word than arbitrary. I'm just.
Okay, yeah, you know, my, my main concern is if there's like a few blocks in which a food truck could be attached to a non-alcoholic building, like let's say from Hope Street to the Deacon East.
I mean, we, we could, we could do a section that says, you know, properties fronting on certain streets, you know, would be allowed. I mean, you know, again, we're getting really.
Nipicky?
I, I, yeah, I, I, I think we are.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I think if you, if you, if you want to loosen up, if you want to remove the alcohol restrictions, since that effectively removes things down to basically two spots in the docks. I think, you know, probably the, the logical way to do it is to, you know, something that Commissioner Eisner has, has, has suggested is that further refine it to, you must have a brick and mortar establishment. You must have an approved electric service. You must have, you know, that would, you know, that's probably the, I, I think the fairest way to, to, to do it. And, and there's a logical nexus to what you're asking, you know, what you're putting in the ordinance and you're not being arbitrary about it.
And those are legally supportive. As opposed to doing, I mean, if we did either zones or the restrictions that they're discussing, those are legally supportive. They're not arbitrary as opposed to doing individual streets in an area. The whole area, it's easy.
Okay. I have no further comments at this time. We're now going to go to, um, public comments. I will say, if you've, if you've submitted an email into the record and you come up to speak, your email will not be read into the record. You either have one or the other. So if you're coming to speak during public comment, any email sent in will not be read. So we've opened the floor to public comments.
Yes. My name is Dimitris Soliveris, fifteen oh four, go for a loop. I also own two businesses on the Sponge Docks. This weekend, we had a trailer right next to my restaurant, which they didn't have bathrooms. They used all mine, which cost me money. So I had a lot of people that came in to use my bathroom because they were eating at Meli. Then all the bees from Meli pushed employees and customers away from my business because I had people that worked there with allergies, so they couldn't work that night. I had customers that come in and denied to sit down outside because of the bees. If you're supposed to have bathrooms, why didn't they have bathrooms? And this was on Sunday. You didn't even pass a law yet or pass whatever you're doing. And they were on public property. These are things that need to be thought about first. This needs to be reviewed because I've been down there many, many years. My father be turning his grave right now, what's happened to the Sponge Docks. I don't see any of you down there. John, I think I saw you once when the hurricane came by to ask if we got permits. Not one of you have come down there to see us. That's all I have to say. I, 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 I'm just, I'm upset because I work really hard. I've built a har, a restaurant. I put a lot of money into it through Italia that I got destroyed with. And I got no help from nobody. I didn't need any help. I did it myself. But now I got people coming down there to do the same thing. When I wanted to build my Tarpon Springs Coffee Company and planning and zoning didn't want to give me the, the, the permits to put a hood in because I wanted to do Lu Pumadas in a brick and mortar store. So we're just gonna let somebody with a trailer come down there because it's cultural or it's a Greek thing? I'm Greek buddy. I know Greek food. And we've got a lot of things down there that are Greek. I got businesses down there that sell lukumades. Doesn't matter.
Please, 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 civility, please.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put my lukumades machine out there and I'm gonna sell them. I'm gonna give them away for free. I'm gonna give them away for free. See, when you were up here, when you weren't on that board, I remember you because I used to sit here and listen to you. You barked and pointed and made things happen.
There, comments should be made directly to the board.
I'm talking, I'm talking to this man right here.
I understand, but comments are supposed to be made to the commission, not the individual commission.
Like I said, I haven't seen one of you down there. None of you. But you're all here to make decisions on it. On something that you have no idea what goes on down there. Because none of you spent any time down there. Thank you.
Irene Manglis, thirteen zero seven Mears Boulevard. Um. So for the record, I never sent any of our customers to use his bathroom. He uses bathroom and I'm, I apologize for the bees. It's because we use real honey. Okay. So first and foremost, I just wanna say that I have no intention in changing the integrity of the sponge docks. Nor am I hoping that it gets saturated with food trucks. In twenty twenty, when House Bill one one nine three was passed and the city had to rewrite the ordinances for food trucks. It was written in such a way, it kept small entrepreneurs out like me. It allowed the current businesses in town to continue to obtain and operate their food trucks, a win for them. I didn't have a dog in that fight. I didn't know if I would make it first, past my first year. Fast forward five years later, I am still trying to spread my product and feed as many mouths as I can. On the contrary, in the last five years, I have lost a significant amount of revenue because I'm only able to operate twice a month. It was three times a month with the Sunset Beach concerts. However, they changed the rules, so we only are able to get two concerts per year and the occasional festival. I am in no direct competition with anyone at the docks. No one does what we do. Mobile food vendors are all over the world. You can get fresh lukumades and galinos grease right in front of a sponge boat. I am trying to create the same experience here. The B O C has the authority to reject and accept, approve and disapprove what you all feel is good for the city. I am asking you all to take the time and see how these unrealistic laws have affected me, a local born and raised in Tarpon Springs. I am just asking for more opportunity in my hometown, making an honest living. I am not asking to use the right of way of any city property. I just wanna rent private property. The city has continuous pattern of creating unrealistic conditions. Now food trucks are required to be on a parcel with a bathroom and a liquor license. I'm sorry, that has not worked for us. I don't even have seating. I have no intention on collection, I had, I had no intention on collecting signatures for my petition until there was one circulating against us at the sponge docks. We have support from pretty much all the stores just west of the, of the fud- of the fudge factory. We have collected about two hundred signatures in support and still collecting. In certain states like New York, only certain amount of permits are given. Maybe that can happen with the sponge docks. Or our private property can be grandfathered in, like many other things in Tarpon Springs have been in the past. My business pays its operating expenses just like any other business. We aren't built brick and mortar. We're more like vintage steel than a lot of personality. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the work you all do. I respect everyone at the sponge docks and their livelihood. Thank you.
Next public comment.
Oh, yeah. My name is Tom Frick. I speak on behalf of Halas Restaurant Bakery, on behalf of Nick, Gus, and approximately three hundred employees. We wanna keep food trucks off of the sponge docks. Solely sponge docks, Tarpan Ave, wherever else, we don't mind. We just wanna keep them off the sponge docks. We have fifteen brick and mortar restaurants competing for X amount of business. And there's already limited parking for all of those businesses. And I wanna keep it short and that's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Jane Harrington, ten twenty one Jamaica Way, Tarpon Springs. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, I've spoken about the proposed changes to the food truck ordinance prior. Some of the details are certainly justifiable. As such as their temporary nature, the concerns for side effects on neighboring businesses and homes. A significant concern, however, for some people is the potential competition for established brick and mortar restaurants. Often, those restaurants are very busy with many people waiting a long time to be seated and served. They tend not to be set up for a quick turn, takeout of lighter food items. Food trucks can offer a variety of options, potentially more attractive to families and people not interested in the long. Wait time sitting for a meal or the complexities involved. My view is that food trucks are in a totally different market than the brick and mortar restaurants. If there is competition, it would be good for everyone's business. Bringing more people to the area, stimulating more innovations in menus, uh, prices and service. More people being attracted to our city should be good for all retail businesses. I believe that all businesses, not just alcohol based establishments, should be allowed to benefit from this ordinance as long as they meet. All of the city criteria, private land, electric, et cetera. For example, if I drove past a gathering. Not necessarily on the sponge docks, nice little plaza on Alt nineteen. And I saw a food truck or Melly's Donuts, I would certainly stop or maybe even have to turn around, go back and check out that happening. And of course, I would have to get my Melly donut fix. But similarly, the requirements for onsite restroom seem very restrictive. Restroom availability is a community characteristic, not just that of a single business. You have rest, public restrooms on Tarpon Avenue and on Dodecanese. There are people going up and down. They have a public restroom. People, the bakeries, a lot of places do not let you just go in and use the restroom. You have public restrooms. Several elements of this approach to the ordinance seems more concerned about preventing worst case bad consequences. Than enabling new business and growth. Though if this ordinance would enable new ideas rather than create complex barriers, I believe you'd be surprised at the results. I really do hope you think about expanding it rather than making an ordinance so tight. You can say, yes, Tarpan allows trucks, but oh, there's no truck that could be allowed. Dodecanese has two places if you stay with alcohol business, wine at the docks and the bridge. Those two places would not live by donuts alone. They need a variety of food trucks and that's only two places. And everyone is so upset that we're taking away, we're giving options, not taking business out of Halas. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Tommy Scott, uh, I'm one of the owners of Unrefined Brewing on Tarpon Avenue. And I live at seven oh four Pine Street. So not only do I own a business in town, but I own a home in town as well. Been here for about five years. Before I get into, uh, what I prepared, I do wanna make a clarification to help you all out because I'm very familiar with the food truck industry. Food trucks don't go places without a minimum guarantee if it's not an alcohol business. So if you ha- if you do allow businesses that don't have alcohol, I mean, they're gonna have to guarantee like a thousand dollar minimum and that's tough for an arts and crafts shop or some, so consider that as well. But anyhow, I wanna speak about downtown. I know everybody's focused on Tarpon Avenue, but the breweries downtown, brighter days of myself in particular, that have private lots. We don't have food. We don't wanna be restaurants. Uh, you know, and we struggle because Tarpon, we love Tarpon Springs, but. You know, at the, at the end of the day, what we're seeing in the industry, according to, uh, many industry publications, including Harris polling from the Craft Beer Insights panel. Is that the frequency people are drinking is less, but it's the millennials who are occupying the most. Up from, uh, age twenty one to, uh, forty five is where you're seeing the increase in beer drinking, beer consumption. Once you hit about forty five and on, I think forty five to fifty five, the, the average beers, uh, consumption's dropped eight percent. And it just goes up the older people get. And the reality of the situation is Tarpon Springs is an older community. Uh, in twenty twenty three, the census in Tarpon Springs, it said we have twenty five thousand eight hundred seventy two people. And only, uh, sixty eight point nine percent of those people are under the age of eight, of sixty five. Now, we're trying to get down to forty five. Census didn't have that data, but that's not a ton of people for the local breweries. So when we're looking at food trucks, especially specifically the breweries and maybe the distillery, uh, we're looking to bring people into town. Uh, the millennials make up forty, I think it's forty eight percent of food truck consumption. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to tap into Palm Harbor, sixty one thousand five hundred thirty four. We're trying to tap into Newport Ritchie and Trinity, who have a combined population of thirty six thousand, all of which are younger populations than Tarpon Springs. So when I wanna have a rotating food truck on a Saturday, uh, afternoon while I'm having live music in my back private lot. I'm trying to bring new eyeballs to Tarpon Springs. I'm trying to say, hey, these food trucks all have followings. And the followings bring these millennials along, whether it's, uh, sushi, whether it's grilled cheese sandwiches, whether it's tamales. Uh, people follow these food trucks. And then we get a younger population that comes into Tarpon. If I've got live music from two to five, if I've got a food truck from two to five. People come into town and then they wander around Tarpon Springs. You can ask a lot of the business owners in town at many of the meetings we've been to. Uh, with the downtown business district. My focus as one of the business owners in downtown is spin to try to bring new eyeballs to Tarpon Springs. And I understand the sponge docks is a little bit of a different beast. But, you know, our, uh, what, what do I say? My widget is about seven bucks. I gotta sell a lot of widgets, uh, to pay my bills and pay my staff. We employ five people right now down there. And we are the largest production brewery in Tarpon and we wanna continue going on. Uh, but I think it's important for us to have that food option and we don't wanna become a restaurant, you know, requiring us with the current ordinance to be a permanent. Food truck, uh, attached to our business, that makes us a restaurant, which makes us a direct competitor to a restaurant. We don't want that. We wanna be able to rotate these trucks that attract, that are attracting these millennials from outside of Tarpon to come in and see how great Tarpon is. And to see everything Tarpon has to offer. And, and I will say that, uh, you know, the Brewers Association did some studies and. You know, what they have found is that breweries that offer food see a twenty to thirty percent increase in average customer spend per visit. So for someone like us, if a food truck comes in that requires a thousand dollar minimum, it's about fifty to sixty customers. If those fifty to sixty customers buy just two beers from us or one and a half beers is what I like to say. That's almost a thousand dollar difference for a small business like ours to keep us in town. Cause it's really, it's really tough to make all that money on that seven dollars and fifty cents. So. Uh, look at downtown. I don't know if you can separate it or not.
Can you wrap it up in ten seconds, sir?
Yeah, I can. Just, just thank you for listening and, uh, you know, let's get this done.
Next speaker, please.
All right, take two. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Tonya Kouri. My husband and I own Acropolis, Greek taverna on the sponge docks. Um. I am here to advocate for preserving the unique charm, character and economic stability of the sponge docks. The sponge docks are not just another part of town. They are a huge part of Tarpon Springs' identity and revenue source. Tourists from all over the world come to the sponge docks for its unique character and Greek history. And Greek food is a huge part of the experience people are looking for when they visit. Now, sometimes when you live in a place so long, I'm from Chicago and I never went to this year's tower. You forget what a unique place is, just friend reminder of the sponge docks. People come from around the world for that experience. It's different than downtown. It's a living, breathing part of our culture. Not just a venue for passing trends. Allowing food trucks in this area threatens to undermine what generations, as my friends and neighbors here have told you, generations. Have put their blood, sweat and tears in and have built. Unlike our beloved brick and mortar restaurants, food trucks do not make the same long-term investments in our community. But let's talk revenue. Food trucks do not contribute to our city the way traditional restaurants do. And if you take some of the revenue from our restaurants, who do contribute it, to the food trucks who don't contribute it, we all lose. For instance, property taxes. Brick and mortar restaurants pay commercial property taxes. That money supports our schools, infrastructure and essential city services. Food trucks pay none of that. Second, utilities. Restaurants use city water, sewer and sanitation services. That's steady revenue. Food trucks bring in their own water. You have not allowed them to use generators, so that's good and don't pay any revenue for trash. So in short. Restaurants invest in our community. Food trucks just visit it. But we also must consider the cultural impact. The sponge docks are a destination because of their authenticity. Tourists don't come here for food trucks. They can find that at any fairground. They come for the rich experience of walking our docks, shopping in our Greek shops and tasting family recipes, pan down. Passed down for generations. Introducing food trucks risks diluting that experience. It invites a transient carnival-like feel into a place that has always stood for tradition, family and pride in our culture. Now, I'm a small business owner. I am not against small businesses. My husband and I recently came to the sponge docks and it is a dream come true to be on the Tarpon Springs sponge docks. You know what? We had to save money and use our savings to do that. We paid for it. And no offense to this lady behind me, but if you wanna be on the sponge docks so bad, we all do. You gotta pay for it. Rent a building and sell all the donuts to your heart's content. Because again, I'm all for competition. That's what makes America great, but on a fair playing field. Then it's fair competition. We're just asking for a fair paying field. So this is not about against food trucks in general. There are plenty of other areas in Tarpon Springs where they may be appropriate. Uh, the golf course would be great for food trucks. But the sponge docks are not one of them. Let's protect what makes this place unlike anywhere else in the world. Well, except for maybe Greece itself. So please vote to preserve the integrity, economy and the soul of the sponge docks. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Jason Edwards, three oh seven Cypress Street. I just wanna say I live here, I work here. I'm a local. I don't have any businesses here. I'm just basically up here because I love Tarpon Springs. I love enjoying it and, uh, I'm for food trucks. I do frequent the breweries and the distilleries sometimes and, uh, I'm kinda more there for him, or for them rather. And, um, you know, when you go there, you know, so you're, I mainly go for music. I go there, you know, they usually have music for about three hours or so. So if you're there, you know, to watch music and you wanna eat, you have to, you know, leave to get something else or have something delivered. So it's just really convenient to be able to have that. Come to you there and have their patrons stay there longer and support that business. I understand that, um, you know, the food trucks aren't helping the city in that way, but they're helping those businesses that are utilizing the food trucks. Um, basically, um, we just want variety, you know, I do frequent all the, the local, um, restaurants here. Um, I love them. I want them to do great. I wanna support them, but we want variety. So basically, you know, we just. Think that'll give us more choices, more, more, more bring, um, different, unique culinary, um, options to Tarpon Springs. Um, I think it'll help, uh, boost local economy with more foot traffic, like, uh, Tommy mentioned. It'll, uh, help people just see what Tarpon's all about. It'll help people, you know, realize, oh, this restaurant's here, maybe next time I'll try that. Or just get people in the shops, the cafes and the entertainment, um, businesses. Um, lastly, I think competition's good. Um, I think it, um, you know, makes you strive for higher quality. A better menu selection, hospitality and service increases and the design and ambiance will increase. Um, because they're trying to, you know, compete with that and keep up and want people to come there. So. It kinda discourages stagnation and complacency in those restaurants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come on, now's your chance to speak.
Tonya Pilarinos, thirteen oh seven Mears Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Tarpon Springs is a beautiful small town that has a strong Greek heritage. The sponge docks is a testament to the city's historical roots and cultural richness. And lukumades are a significant part of Greek tradition. But by allowing Melly to sell fresh, made to order lukumades, the city preserves and celebrates these cultural traditions by allowing locals and visitors a delicious taste of Greek heritage. By giving Melly the opportunity to be at the sponge docks, the city would be supporting one of its own residents, promoting small business growth. And the presence of more food offerings, particularly ones that focus on local and traditional Greek delicacies. Which would only enhance the cul- the cultural experience for visitors and bring. Bring in additional tourism as well as locals and more foot traffic. Increased foot traffic would be benefiting all businesses at the sponge docks, not just the restaurants. You go to the sponge docks past seven o'clock, it's, it's a ghost town. We all know that. Locals don't go down to the sponge docks as much as they used to, unfortunately. So food trucks, I'm not saying to flood the sponge docks with food trucks, but. Giving certain food trucks a chance, I don't think there's an issue with that. I understand the position of many on the sponge docks do not wanna fill the docks with food trucks. It's understandable, but at the same time. Some of the same people do support Melly and we appreciate that. The B O C represents the interests of Tarpon Springs residents and ensures that their. The B O C represents the interests of Tarpon Springs residents and ensures that their voices are heard. You promote the growth and prosperity of the local economy by supporting local businesses while attracting new businesses. And you're responsible for governing the city and ensuring that policies and decisions align with the best interests of the community. So I respectfully urge the board to find a way, because when there is a will, there is a way, to support Meli, who is passionate about sharing a cherished Greek tradition with her community. Irene lives and breathes Tarpon. She loves this town with all her heart. And this is an opportunity to showcase our culture while supporting a local Tarponite that will boost the town's economy. As the lady behind me said, Irene has been in this town. She's grown up. She, she's gone to school here. The lady behind me just came and bought Acropolis. She's from Chicago. Nothing against it. Good for her. I wish her the best. But we are talking about someone that has been living here for their entire lives. And with the ordinances that are put into place, food trucks in general are made to fail. Other than maybe several people, if you haven't run a food truck, you don't know what goes into it. Those generators are a hundred and twenty pounds each. I work with Irene and we literally lift those things up twice a day, a hundred and twenty pounds each. And I understand not wanting the generators, absolutely, they do make noise. There are inverter-type generators, which Meli has, which do not make as much noise. But with, um, consideration to the parking lots that you guys were saying, there needs to be an RV hookup. You can't just go plug in a food truck into a normal plug that any restaurant has. And for a food truck to go on any one of these properties, again, they need permission. I can't go into any parking lot and just be like, I want to park here. They're gonna need permission from that owner. So everyone can say that we don't want the, the docks to flood with food trucks. But again, it's the residents, it's the people of the Sponge Docks to not allow any food truck that they want. If they want Meli, great. If they want maybe another dessert truck or something else, that should be their decision. But again, we should have the, I mean, the B O C should be able to decide that maybe one or two food trucks are allowed down at the docks. Thank you.
Katie Taylor, nineteen ninety-one Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. Um, I go to Greek Town to eat my Mama's for my, for my shrimp. And I go to, used to be Yanni's for my octopus. And I go to Coaster's for my lamb. But I also like the food trucks because it's like a new generation thing going on. People follow food trucks. So I was gonna ask, um, City Manager Rudd, at one of the meetings, you mentioned that down by Win Dixie, the old Win Dixie rep behind Road, Roadies, the restaurant, uh, that big parking lot out there, that big complex is just empty. Rather than them having food trucks just periodically here and there on the beach or somewhere doing special events, can anything be done in that area so you can have food trucks more often? Maybe every weekend have a food truck alley down there, a food truck where they can go and set up their food trucks and just have a big place just for food trucks? So is there any place in Tarpon that can handle food trucks on weekends?
Ms. Taylor, I'm gonna ask you to get each and every question you want out. That way we can not go dialogue. So he's got that one question. Any other questions you want?
That's it. Can you find out what Win Dixie parking lot can be used for food trucks? The old Win Dixie parking lot?
Yes, we'll, we'll be looking into it. We'll definitely have our economic developer reaching out to the property owner. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other public comments?
I don't usually do this. Okay. I'm George Valeris, eight seven two West Bayshore Drive. I don't have a restaurant that has to worry about competition from the food trucks or anything like that. But I am concerned about the image, uh, that if you start opening it up, um, you're gonna take, just like she said, Sponge Docks have an image of Tarpon Springs, people coming for the Greek. Your, your Meli truck was next to me, uh, this past weekend, okay? It was great. Hate too many of those things. Um, but I am concerned about where the locations are gonna be. Um, we did, you know, Dimitri, uh, mentioned something about the bees. We did have a lot of bees sitting around our counter. I did have customers moving away, uh, because of the bees. Now, again, where's the location's gonna be? Um, it's an open area away, away from a confined space where I do business, uh, or other people's, uh, business might be affected by that. You know, the bees aren't the biggest issue, okay? Uh, but it is a concern. Um, the other is the impact of the trash, uh, and residue and stuff that's, that's brought about from these people, from people walking around with containers. Uh, if they start overflowing the, the city baskets, that means more work for the city employees to have to clean up, uh, and, and deal with. Um, again, not a major issue, but the restaurants do have, uh, trash bins and refuse, uh, places where they take their trash to. Um, now they, Irene did a good job on, on keeping her area clean, so no, no problem there. And it, it is a nice product to have, okay? Um, I have no objections to her specific product, but I do have objections to other food truck types that are not consistent with the Greek culture down there, okay? Uh, that's, that's my biggest concern. If you, uh, wanna put it someplace, if you wanna have a, a specific area designated for two, uh, food trucks, uh, do it away from there. Um, just like the, uh, the woman just said now about the Win Dixie parking lot. You know, other cities have locations where they set up with all the food trucks to go to. And that's basically a permanent location where they set up all the time. And that's where they go. So if people want to go, uh, go to food trucks and, and eat food truck food, fine, no problem. But they do it in a specific location. Now, attached to a brick and mortar building, that's great. Like the, like the little breweries and stuff here where they could use something like that. That's okay. That's in a different area. But at the Sponge Docks, I, I just don't want to see food trucks popping up all over the place. Because you open up to one, you're gonna have a hard time trying to, trying to restrict it to one type of food. And I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next public comment? Are there any other public comments before we go into our emails? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Juliana Day, four thirteen East Oakwood. Welcome, everyone. Um, on the topic of food trucks, um, I know the audience, the audience that you all read was specifically targeting certain places with food trucks. Is that, is this like a, a first reading? Is there gonna be places open up for other areas where that you can use food truck? For instance, in your city parks, would it be allowed in parks? Would it be allowed along the roadway, like, um, when you're having your certain parades and stuff? So that's my question to the, um, to the B O C. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. IT, are there any other Zoom comments? There are no more comments. Okay, and, um, City Clerk, can you please start reading the emails?
The first one is from Annie Samarcus, one, I'm sorry, eleven ten South Florida Avenue. When a young entrepreneur who loves her hometown and her culture and her family's special recipes wants to share that love and operate a food truck business in her hometown, it should be feasible for the Board of Commissioners and the City of Tarpon Springs to find the parameters to make that happen fairly and feasibly for all involved. Yes, some business owners own the buildings in which they operate their businesses. Yes, some business owners lease the occupancies in which they operate their business. A food truck business owner operates a business from a truck that could be either owned by them or leased by them. If financially benef- it's, if financial benefit to the City of Tarpon Springs is the concern or issue, meaning rental of land space or paying sales and use tax, there should be a way to make that happen fairly for all business owners who would like to operate a business in our Sponge Docks Greek Town Historic District. The Sponge Docks is the main reason tourists come from all over the world to Tarpon Springs. That's the reality of it. So in closing, please keep in mind how important it is to be helpful to and thankful for young entrepreneurs who care about their hometown history and culture. Sincerely, Annie Samarcus, fourth-generation Tarponite. Mateus Spanolos, eleven oh nine Goshen Road. I believe allowing Meli's Donuts to conduct business, business at the Sponge Docks would be an attribute to Tarpon Springs. Not only are the donuts delicious, but the team brings hospitality and friendliness better than most stores in the docks. I believe they will bring a tourism, new and fun things to do and try at the docks, which is much needed for our visitors. Not to mention they are also providing a top Greek dessert. It is not competition in comparison to Hellas and the other bakeries around because Meli's is their own. Style, flavor, everything. This is a hundred percent a beneficial addition to our city. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Linda Scodis, fourteen twenty Oleander Drive. Meli should be allowed to present for all purposes at any time, for any event, as they are the best food truck around. Irene Mangless is an incredible business owner. Angie Zalikas, ten forty Wideview Avenue. As a citizen of Tarpon Springs and growing up with my family owning multiple shops in the Sponge Docks, I think that having the Meli food truck would benefit everyone. The patrons of Tarpon that love Meli's product so much, but also the businesses in the Sponge Docks. The docks can't progress with time if we don't start making some changes and adding a food truck would be great. Tony Sefties, uh, thirteen eleven Miras Boulevard. This is a great asset to our community and also to our Sponge Docks. Meli Donuts bring people to our community and a great asset to the Sponge Docks rather than the ones that are frozen and offered to you in certain restaurants. Claudia Riger, forty-seven thirty eighty-first Street Avenue, North Pinellas Park. The board should encourage local businesses and allow locals to operate and serve the community. Stop being a hindrance and start being a partner. Enforce laws that make sense and not laws that, and not laws for their own sake. Allow Meli to continue to operate in the Sponge Docks and remain an integral part of the community. Jennifer Haki, Hakiis, three oh five Holly Hill Road, Olds Bar. Allowing private property business owners to host food trucks would mu- would bring much-needed additional foot traffic and revenue to the Sponge Docks. Trucks would not be taking any business away from existing businesses, but on the contrary, may bring new customers. Food trucks are an, a tractor and will draw from a customer base that is likely not yet shopping at the Sponge Docks. Please reconsider the ordinance and vote for growth and sustainability at the Sponge Docks. Samantha Silver, six fourteen Palma Avenue. As a proud resident of Tarpon Springs and a lover of Greek culture, Meli's Greek Donuts should without a doubt be allowed to operate at the Sponge Docks. Not only is Irene an amazing person, but her business is an asset to our community as a successful business and showcasing Greek cuisine in a fun way. We love Meli. Harita Kledakis, sixty-four West Park Street. Let Meli Donuts at the Sponge Docks. Sheila Fowler, eleven ten Graywood Avenue. Food truck, please allow Meli at the docks. Kristy Vivalis, eighty-three thirty-two Blue Bonnet Place, Newport Ritchie. Irene should be able to operate her business at the Sponge Docks. There are so many businesses down there that would benefit her as well. Growing up in Tarpon, I would be extremely disappointed to not allow someone who has grown up, created success, and loves her hometown. There are other businesses in the parking lot that sell their food. Why not her? I would really consider this as she is a Tarpon native. Not only that, her donuts are the best ever. Debelina Rinoz, forty-five twenty-four Ontario Drive, Newport Ritchie. Meli Greek Street Donuts should have the right, just like any other food truck, to succeed in Tarpon Springs, to be able to have an area to park your food trucks and give back to our community as we all come together to help and support each other. Eleni Severis, seventeen twenty, um, Atkinson Avenue, Whiting, Indiana. Food truck. Uh, Judy Acuno, eight eleven Virginia Avenue. This is my letter of support to request that Meli Donut Food Truck be allowed to operate at the Sponge Docks. Caterina Costas, Constance, five oh one Sanibel Court. Meli would be valuable addition at the Sponge Docks. It incorporates perfectly with our Greek heritage and they are deeply loved and supported in the community. Stacy Milos, seven fifteen Wesley Avenue. I am a hundred percent supportive of food trucks, especially Meli Donuts in Tarpon Springs at the Sponge Docks. Although I love seeing them at First Friday, it would be great to have them more often, not only at events. Not only is Meli one of the best food trucks around, they are locally owned and truly authentic. I also feel that the food trucks would bring in more business there and to the community, which is what Tarpon Springs needs. Evie Ma- Melos, thirty-six forty-three Lincoln, Linkwood Street, Newport Ritchie. I would love to see food trucks in Tarpon Springs. I don't understand why people are so against it. I feel it would be a great add on and bring in more businesses to the city and Sponge Docks. I'm especially rooting for Meli Donuts since they are delicious and they are local. Valladue Tesopolis, eighty-nine oh six Broadsham Way, Winter Garden, Florida. My name is Valladue Tesopolis and I'm originally from Tarpon Springs, Florida. I currently live in Orlando and try to come back often to visit family and friends, all who will still live here. I attempt to support Meli Donuts whenever I am back in town, but due to the tight restrictions, I have only been able to see them in the beginning of the month because that's when their events typically occur. I have been gone many years, but Sponge Docks have remained more or less the same. It would be exciting to see something new at the Sponge Docks. Living in Orlando, food trucks are everywhere and have a huge following. I believe Meli Donuts would open the doors to online following and bring people to the beautiful, beautiful city of Tarpon Springs who have never heard of this town. In addition, we should allow Meli, which serves Greek traditional desserts, to be able to operate on private par- property because she is a local who is heavily involved and devoted to her community and always gives back whenever she can. I don't feel Meli would take away from the Sponge Docks, but on the contrary, it would add to the beautiful hidden treasure we all know as home. Brianna Wis- Wisgaski, fourteen forty-seven Miras Boulevard. Allow food trucks in Tarpon Springs. Meli is essential to Tarpon Springs. Artemis Stevens, ten thirty-one Hamilton Avenue. Vote to allow food trucks at the Sponge Docks. Michelle Bozart, three oh eight High Street. Please allow local business and resident op- to operate out of Tarpon Springs. Meli Donuts deserves to be a part of our town. Um, Caliope Skor- Skorelis, um, four forty-eight Athens Street. We did extend our, a reply to her. We're, we're not sure if she's for or against because her comments didn't go through and we have not received anything back from her. Sophie Stammas, thirteen thirty-two Hillside Drive. Dear Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners, I am writing to express my strong support for allowing food trucks at the Sponge Docks with focus on permitting local community-based vendors. A well-regulated approach issuing a limited number of permits will ensure food trucks complement existing businesses rather than overwhelm the area. One standout example is Meli Greek Donuts. A woman-owned, family-run food truck operated by a member of our Greek community. Meli offers authentic lukumadis, enhancing the culture and culinary experiences that make the Sponge Dock so special. Supporting local food trucks like Meli's keeps business opportunities within our community while providing visitors and residents with diverse, high-quality options. By allowing a select number of local food trucks, we can boost entrepreneurship, support small businesses, and enhance the vibrancy of the Sponge Docks, all while maintaining the charm and balance of this beloved destination. I urge you to consider a thoughtful permitting process that prioritizes, prioritizes homegrown businesses and preserves the unique character of our city. Sincerely, Sophie Stammas. Nancy Olson, seven ninety-three Chesapeake Drive. Please find a way to allow Meli trucks to sell their donuts from the coolest food truck ever at the Sponge Docks. They are such fun, loving, dedicated, hard-working ambassadors for our Greek community. I am not Greek, but I am a Tarpon Springs voting resident and would love for our guests and my family to- I am not Greek, but I am a Tarpon Springs voting resident and would love for our guests and my family to have the opportunity. To buy Melly Donuts when we are shopping at the Sponge Docks. Thank you, Nancy Olson. Alexa. Alexa Par, eight seventeen Gulf Road. I am for Irene Manglis to be granted the ability to conduct business with her food truck, Melly. She has already reached out to several restaurant or property owners that pay taxes and they will allow her. To be on their private property for her sales. As a tax-paying, long-time-standing resident of Tarpon Springs. I am for this decision and think it will bring nothing except different type of customers to our area that follow her business. If not granted on private property, then the city should find a suitable spot for her to be able to park her truck. And pay a fee every month that would go towards a property tax if need be. I am for and always will be supporting our locals. That is what our city is about. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing that this part of the agenda will be approved. Melly has been such a blessing to our town that keeps our heritage alive in a town of locals. Who are generations of our beautiful town. So many people benefit from Melly. Locals and tourists. Nobody has the Melly has to offer. Thank you, Irene. Mary Kulianis, one fifteen Cleveland Place. I am writing to express my strong support for allowing food trucks to operate on private property within our city. As someone who has lived in Tarpon Springs my entire life, I deeply care about the success and vibrancy of our local businesses. I firmly believe that permitting food trucks to operate on private property. Will not be detrimental to the restaurants and businesses in the area. Rather, it will be beneficial for our local economy and community. Food trucks have a dedicated following and bring in business wherever they go. By allowing them to operate on private property, we open the door for increased foot traffic, which benefits surrounding businesses. People who visit a food truck are likely to explore nearby shops, restaurants and attractions, helping to stimulate. Local commerce rather than uh compete with it. Additionally, food trucks provide entrepreneurs with an opportunity to earn a living and contribute to the diversity of our town's food scene. Just like brick and mortar restaurants, they offer unique culinary experiences that attract both locals and visitors. Restricting them from operating on private property. Only limits economic growth and prevents business owners from using their own land as they see fit. Their businesses deserve the opportunity to thrive just as much as other establishments in Tarpon Springs. Sophia Danis, five three seven Noella Drive, Pittsburgh. Melly should be permitted to have her business at the Sponge Docks. We look forward to patronizing her business when we are in Florida. Renee Hart- Hartle, twenty two forty one Andover Circle, Palm Harbor. Irene from Melly Greek Donuts is an ambassador for Tarpon Springs, Florida. Not only is her product a staple in Greek culture, but her business. Is like no other. Working with Irene and seeing how she runs her business and how amazing her donuts are. Having her at the Sponge Docks is a slam dunk. Nancy Bannon, sixteen oh seven Gulf Beach Boulevard. Melly, Melly's would be an asset to the Sponge Docks or anywhere else she wants to park her little food truck. Her food is delicious. She gives back to the community and she is a local favorite and resident who deserves to run her business. On our local streets. Her little trailer will look so much better than the wooden shacks that have been built along the sidewalks of the docks recently. Susannah Andropolis, nine oh seven Bay Shore Drive. The Andropolis family is in favor of Melly Greek Street Donuts being allowed to sell at the Sponge Docks. Renee Dragutsis, ten six one four Garda Drive Trinity. Food trucks should be allowed on private property. I don't live in Tarpon, but am affiliated with the Saint Nicholas Cathedral. We often plan events where food trucks can be hired. Private entities should be allowed to hire food trucks. Renee Scandalaris, fifteen oh two Oleander Drive. I would like to take this opportunity to express my concern to have Melly Greek Donuts food truck. Be allowed to operate on the Sponge Docks on a permanent basis. The company Melly would not only enhance the Greek experience for visitors by being able to enjoy the delicious dessert that. Is a staple in the Greek community, but contribute even more visitors to the beautiful Sponge Docks of Tarpon Springs. By the many people from across the globe that seek to enjoy the scrumptious dessert made by Melly. It is an outrage that Irene Manglis has not had a chance to be heard. In front of the committee or given the opportunity to conduct her business on a permanent basis. Her business should be allowed, especially since she would be operating on private property and add an. Even more enriched taste of Greece to the beautiful Sponge Docks. Fana Yoda Sant House, four four three Riverside Drive. Melly at the docks. Chrissy Bulafentis, fourteen oh eight Gulf Road. My name is Chrissy Bulafentis and I am a proud resident of Tarpon Springs. I am writing to express my support for Melly Food Truck and to request your consideration. In allowing them to sell the delicious luco mothers Greek donuts at the Sponge Docks. Melly has quickly become a local favorite, known for their absolutely outstanding luco mothers Greek donuts. Their presence at the Sponge Docks would not only be an exciting addition for both residents and visitors. But it would also serve to further elevate the food scene in our wonderful city. The Sponge Docks is a historical, popular location that attracts many tourists and I believe Melly would be a perfect fit to enhance the experience. For all who come to enjoy the area. As a Tarpon Springs resident, I understand the importance of maintaining the charm and heritage of our city. But I also believe that fostering local businesses like Melly will help grow our community in a positive and exciting way. Their commitment to quality food and customer service would make them an asset to the Sponge Docks and I trust that their addition. Would only strengthen the appeal of the area. Thank you for considering my request. I sincerely hope that the city will allow Melly this opportunity. To contribute to the unique and vibrant atmosphere of the Sponge Docks. Kathy Sprecher, nine seventeen Lindley Lane. Melly Donut Style, Melly Greek Style Street Donuts. She is a local and lives in Tarpon. Her food is fabulous. Let her be on the Sponge Docks. Thank you. Um this is another one from Nikki Sazalis, fifteen oh two Cromwell Drive. That has submitted something that we replied to and we did not get any response back. Her message did not come through. Nikki Tsamouris, fifteen oh two Cromwell Drive. This is for Melly to be allowed to rent a place for business. Irene Gabor Kiros, five twenty Wafer Avenue. Put Melly at the Sponge Docks. Tabrula Cavarqueros, five twenty three Wafer Drive. Put Melly on the Sponge Docks in Tarpon Springs. Aleni Patterson, fifteen oh six Tallahassee Drive. I am in favor of food trucks at the Sponge Docks. Melly has a large following and will bring more businesses to local establishment. What Melly has to offer is a beloved dessert to many and I see no harm in allowing her to run her business. Where she has seen her roots. Athena Forcella, seven twenty three Katchiput Loop. Melly Greek Street Donuts should a hundred percent be allowed to rent private property and operate to sell donuts. Thank you. Aleni Hasie Theodoru, eight five five Riverside Drive. I am writing to express my support for Melly. It's a beloved local business that has been serving our community with quality. Affordable desserts while fostering a sense of connection and vibrancy. Melly has become a valued part of our neighborhood, providing not only delicious desserts. But also contributing to the local economy and creating a welcoming space for residents and visitors alike. While current regulations may not explicitly permit this type of operation, I urge you to consider the positive impact. That Melly has on our community. Allowing this business to continue operating on private property would support local entrepreneurship. And foster community engagement. The food truck has become a gathering spot for friends, family and neighbors. Promoting social interaction and community pride. Additionally, it stimulates local economy by attracting foot traffic and visitors, indirectly benefiting other nearby businesses. We kindly ask for your consideration in amending or revisiting the current regulations to allow for responsible. And community-oriented food truck operations on private property. Your support would not only uplift a hard-working local entrepreneur, but also demonstrate a commitment to fostering a vibrant, diverse community. Thank you for your time and consideration. We sincerely hope that you will support our local businesses and the positive. Contributions they make to our community. Naomi Crisakis, nine thirty one Bay Shore Drive. Please say yes to allowing it. Lisa Valadu Master of a Sea List, twelve fifty eight Highland Avenue. I like to have Melly Donuts in the Sponge Docks. They should allow it and we need something like that in our hometown. Irene Reynos, fourteen, eleven forty five Clippers Way. Melly should be allowed to rent private property at the Sponge Docks to operate. Thank you. Jessica Woolco, five fifteen Penns- uh Pennsylvania Avenue, Palm Harbor. I write in to ask you to reconsider your position on food trucks at the Sponge Docks or anywhere in Tarpon for that matter. Not only do I think it would be an asset to the docks, but also to the surrounding establishments. It could only help by drawing more people to into the Sponge Docks and the businesses there. Additionally, being that they are self-sufficient and removable, they are also a low impact to the environment. Thank you for taking the time to read my comment. I am hopeful you all will make the right decision for the community. And the hard-working people in it. Demi Philes, twenty forty Blue River Road Holiday. Melly is absolutely amazing. Everyone loves Irene and her famous luco mothers. People come from different states just to eat them. We deserve a good luco mothers place down at the Sponge Docks. I know I crave them all the time and I wish she was closer instead of waiting for events to go, to go and eat them. Melly needs to be at the Sponge Docks all the time. Rose Kulianis, thirty sixty one Jacob Crossing Lane Holiday. Growing up in Tarpon Springs, I respect all business owners that keep our town alive, especially our heritage in historic Greek town. So please know this comment is not against anyone. I believe Melly deserves to be a part of the Sponge Docks and Melly would be paying rent, just like anyone else. Restaurants bring a dining experience when people want to sit down and enjoy lunch or dinner. They also bring a lot more revenue in which helps justify the rent cost differences. Sometimes you're in the mood for a sit-down and sometimes you want to be on the go. Sometimes you want octopus and sometimes you want just dessert. Neighboring Greek restaurants have similar selections of food and people will still choose their favorite place. Or what eato they are in the mood for that day. It's not a competition. Sometimes I want Katerina's, sometimes I want Mr. Suvlaki. Each bring their own flavor and experiences. I believe Melly can bring more excitement and traction to the Sponge Docks. Irene and Tanya are also very respectful. And will follow city rules and won't cause any problems. I pray Melly gets the opportunity to grow, just like everyone else at the docks and have the oppor- And had the opportunity to. Please consider the opportunity for them. Thanks. Mercury Galeracus, two oh nine Earl Street. It would be nice to have appropriate food trucks that go with the area's facade. Irene Wright, two oh two Hibiscus Street. Allow Melly food trucks to place, to be placed at the Sponge Docks. Sophia Orr, four six five East Orange St- Orange Street. Please vote yes for food, good food trucks at the Sponge Docks. Christine Shans, two oh nine Earl Street. I'm in favor of having food trucks at the Sponge Docks. Loretta Lynch, two oh nine Earl Street. I'm in favor of food trucks down at the Sponge Docks. Pamela Cipoli Dot, five oh five New Leaf Drive. Although I'm not originally from Tarpon Springs, my hun- my husband Michael is and he has known the owner of Melly's Greek Donut for years. When we found out that Irene has op- had opened her business, we made it a priority. To support her startup at various locations across Pinellas. It struck us as odd that Melly couldn't operate in the heart of Tarpon and the Sponge Docks. Irene has successfully built a community of people who enjoy Melly's delicious creations. And they support the business because her strong connections with Tarpon community. I hope that Tarpon will continue to support Irene as she has supported the local economy and allow Melly. To operate at the Sponge Docks. Melly's present will not only draw in their loyal customers, but also bring the tourists and locals. Who will explore the other businesses along the docks, ensuring the steady flow of foot traffic for everyone. Um this one is from a Michelle Y, uh seven sixteen Crimson Trace. Allow Melly Greek Donuts to do business from the Sponge Docks. They are a Tarpon staple. And the nature of their business and the adorable truck would be beneficial to Tarpon as well as our community. Penelope Congress, one oh s- one six one Wood Dove Avenue. I request that the board make the right decision to allow Irene Manglis to rent space at the Sponge Docks to operate her food truck. Not only is Ms. Manglis and her small business a huge part of the community, she gives back so much to help without hesitation. Her business is unique and would not hurt any other business at the Sponge Docks. On the contrary, has a huge following, which can only benefit the local businesses in the area. This just makes sense. George DeVellis, two eighty Terrace Road. They have the right to sell their products at the Sponge Docks. They live in the city of Tarpon Springs. Elfty, Elfteria Moscos, one fifteen East Center Street. Yes, Melly Truck should have a spot at the Sponge Docks. Maria Villanitas, seventeen thirty nine Hampton Lane. Irene Manglis has worked very hard and efforts have gone unnoticed. She has. Uh notarily from petty, from pretty much everyone in Tarpon Springs. I am not sure why someone who is truly a pillar to the community. Has won countless awards for her food truck is having issues getting a rental. Give her the property. She needs to get more people to Tarpon Sponge Docks, which we all know is suffering. And could really use it. Barbara Perkins, ten oh two Riverside Drive. As a business owner and property owner who pays property taxes, I vote no to allowing food trucks. Allowing one food truck is opening doors to allowing all food trucks to come and change the Greek culture. And the entire dynamic of the Sponge Docks. Kathy McCrillis Olive, eight oh eight Lansden's Court. Please allow Melly at the Sponge Docks. Victoria Casares, thirteen seventeen Castle Works Lane. I believe the Melly Greek Street Donuts should be allowed to rent from a private resident, residence located at the Sponge Docks. Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks to sell their donuts to the public all the time instead of only First Fridays. Nicoletta Cox, one two three one two Corkfield Lane Odessa. I am writing to express my feelings pertaining to Melly's food truck. I wish nothing more than to have this truck in a set location on the Sponge Docks. Not only does Irene Manglis deserve this as a true Greek and local patron to our community her entire life. But I also, also as a fellow Greek and Tarpon local my entire life. Would love nothing more than to see this food truck as a permitted staple in our neighborhood. This truck and the luco mothers that they serve fresh would be absolute, would be an absolute brilliant addition to the community. Not only for tourists who visit, but also for locals as well, adding attraction to our beautiful plate, piece of history. The docks and bringing more money to the current surrounding businesses. I personally wait all year for Epiphany and few Greek festivals in our home, in our area. And surrounding just to have this treat made fresh. How wonderful would it be to be able to experience it daily? Please consider making it possible for Melly to be a permanent staple. Thank you kindly for your time. In reading my thoughts. God bless. Renee Corfiatus, seven forty um Margarita Terrace. Um this is another one that the comments didn't come through. We emailed them and had no response. Theodora Salunas, twelve oh six Gulf Road. Dear Board of Commissioners, I am writing to express my support for the presence of food trucks in Tarpon Springs. By permitting food trucks to operate in designated areas on privately-owned property. We can create additional opportunities for business and property owners while ensuring that food trucks have a stable place to operate. This approach would not only help local entrepreneurs thrive, but also maintain an organized and regulated presence of food trucks within our. City limits. Many travel- travelers specifically seek out food truck scenes. This increased foot traffic benefits not only the food trucks, but also surrounding businesses as more visitors explore our town. A prime example of the potent- potential impact is Melly Greek Street Donuts. If they were allowed to operate at the Sponge Docks on privately rented property, it would undoubtedly attract significant foot traffic. The popularity of this unique and authentic Greek dessert would draw in both locals and tourists. Further enhancing the area's reputation as a diverse and exciting destination. Real estate is limited and brick and mortar restaurants should not be the only available food option. The enhanced tourism generated by food trucks contributes to the local economy, further strengthening Tarpon Springs. Thank you for your time, Teddy. Kelly McNeil, eight twenty two Riverside Drive. Please allow Melly to serve at the Sponge Docks. Naomi Keatsus, five ten Delacanese Boulevard. Hi, my name is Naomi Keatsus. I am a landowner at the Sponge Docks and also a taxpayer. I am totally against- I am totally against the idea of allowing food trucks on the Sponge Docks. It is not fair to those who rent a brick-and-mortar. Allowing this will destroy the beautiful, the beauty of the Sponge Docks. It will destroy a lot of businesses who are already struggling to survive. Michael Keatses, six oh one North Florida Avenue. I vote no to allowing food trucks on the Sponge Docks. If you allow one, then the city is opening up a door to allowing all that will destroy the Sponge Docks. Sean McNeil, eight twenty-two Riverside Drive. Melly would attract tourists and more people to the Sponge Docks as she has created a popular following. This would bring more traffic to the Sponge Docks. Alexia Reinos, thirty twenty-two Roxbury Drive Holiday. Melly is on, Melly on the Sponge Docks. Catherine Mahenes, twelve oh eight Castle Works Lane. My name is Catherine Mahenes and I am a small business owner. I own On Avenue Salon here in Tarpon Springs. I want to address food trucks and Melly Greek Street Donuts in particular. I cannot see the reasoning behind not letting Melly rent space on private property in the Sponge Docks. She would be paying rent just like the rest of us as, as our restaurant owners worrying about the competition. It is quite the contrary. Melly would be drawing more people to the docks with the amount of advertising she does on several social media outlets. Let me share my own experience. I had a one-year anniversary for my salon, more of a client appreciation day, and Melly set up at my shop. That day, I had three new people make appointments and not because they heard of the salon, but because they follow Melly. Irene has a following that everybody would benefit from. Oh, and how about what they do for everyone in this community? After the hurricanes, they were out helping everyone restore and repair their shops and homes, including myself. It's our chance to pay it forward and help get them a spot where they rightfully belong at the Sponge Docks in Tarpon Springs, their hometown. Let's aid this local entrepreneur in growing a thriving business, not to mention her trailer brings so much charm and charisma wherever it is parked. Christina Califatis, fifteen thirty-two North River Circle. Food trucks such as Melly should be welcomed at the Sponge Docks. The Melly business is an integral part of the community of Tarpon Springs and should be encouraged and celebrated. Sylvesti Margillo, seventeen oh nine Gulf Beach Boulevard. To the Board of Commissioners, I'm writing you to give my full support in favor of granting access to Melly Greek Street Donuts trailer to park and operate on private property as a proud Tarponite. I am excited and optimistic that Tarpon can grow and evolve with the times while still preserving the integrity of our beautiful culture city. The time is now. With growth comes change and with change comes hesitation and resistance. In my opinion, allowing Melly Greek Street Donuts to park their trailer and operate on private property will not have a negative impact on the longstanding and well-established restaurants or any other businesses for that matter. I don't see how selling Greek Street Donuts out of the small food trailer can even compare or compete with a restaurant's full menu options and seating capacity. In fact, it will only enrich and deepen the culture experience Tarpon Springs has to offer who visits and live here. Thank you for your time. Melissa Douglas, fourteen forty-six Sail Harbor Drive. Let food trucks come to the Sponge Docks and breweries. Anastasia Conser- Consera- I'm sorry, Cutsanis. Two twenty-five Hibiscus Street. Dear City Council, I'm writing to express my strong support for Melly Street Donuts and its owner, a proud Tarpon Springs native. Melly's business is not only a local gem, serving delicious lukumades, but it also plays a key role in preserving and promoting the Greek culture and traditions in the integral and is in our community. As a local business, Melly helps share the flavors and heritage of Greece, enriching the experience of both residents and visitors. Supporting Melly's efforts to operate Sponge Docks would ensure the culture, history of Tarpon Springs continues to thrive and be celebrated. I'm respect- I respectfully urge the City Council to approve the necessary permits for Melly Greeks, Greek, Melly Greek Street Donuts. Local businesses like Melly are essential to maintaining the unique character and cultural vibrancy of Tarpon Springs. Tina Fishman, two oh three South Spring Boulevard. I've lived in Tarpon on and off my whole life. As a resident and business owner in Tarpon, I've seen the Sponge Docks thrive when they remain true to their Greek heritage. Melly Street Donuts embraces that tradition with their unique twist on lukumades. Their offerings don't compete with restaurants. They enhance the experience. Visitors, visitors come expecting great food, pastries, and a connection to sponge diving history, not Mexican, Italian, or Japanese fare. Food carts like Melly's are not a problem. The real issue is non-Greek businesses taking up space, which harms the dock's integrity. Allowing these businesses in with short-sighted, supporting personal agendas, while failing to consider the community as a whole and blocking Melly and Irene Manglis, who supports our small town and promotes the Greek culture, would be another mistake. And that is the end. Oh, let me finish. I'm sorry. There was another page. Mel- Melly's advertising draws people in and increases foot traffic for surrounding businesses. Instead of blocking them, we must have the vision to see how beneficial they truly are for our town. Non-Greek businesses confuse tourists and dilute what makes a dock special. Over time, this could erode its identity, turning it into just another generic waterfront. Let's not make two detrimental mistakes. If we want to keep the Sponge Docks authentic, the main reason we get tourists, Melly belongs. And that is the end of all of my emails.
I'm, I'm going to allow as a, as a special thing, public comments that worse thought were submitted that were not written to the record, either side. This is your last go-around if there are any public comments. You got the email. I sent it to you, by the way. If you want to come up and read it, I'll read it for you. Come on.
Mayor, these were just, just for clarification. These were only emailed from the job-
I know, I know, I know. I made it, I made it clear. Here. I got it. Uh, to, to the mayor, commissioners of Tarpon Springs, we, the undersigned business owners and community members, strongly oppose the proposed changes to the food truck ordinance that would allow food trucks to operate at the historic Sponge Docks. As stakeholders in this community, we believe permitting food trucks in this iconic district would be detrimental to the cultural and economic integrity of the area. Why we oppose food trucks at the Sponge Docks? Unfair competition for established businesses. Local brick-and-mortar restaurants, bakeries, and cafes pay high-ramp property taxes and operational costs to maintain their presence in this historic district. Allowing food trucks would create an unfair playing field by introducing vendors who do not share these same financial obligations. Two, preserving the Greek town identity. The Sponge Docks are not just another business district. They are nationally-recognized Greek heritage site, attracting visitors, seeking an authentic experience. Food trucks do not align with this identity and could dilute the cultural atmosphere that has been, that has made the area so unique and success, success, successful. Three, threat to the historic and tourism economy. Visitors travel to the Sponge Docks for its authentic Greek restaurants, traditional bakeries, and family-owned businesses that have been part of Tarpon Springs for generations. Diverting foot traffic to temporary food vendors could harm long-established businesses that have been foundational to the city's economy. Four, pass city decisions support the stance. There is a historical precedent for keeping food trucks out of the Sponge Docks as previous council members and the mayor approved a ban to protect the integrity of the area. That decision was made for good reason and we believe it should be upheld. Five, a better alternative, placing food trucks downtown. If food trucks must be introduced, we are supporting placing them in a downtown Tarpon Springs, such as, uh, the open lot next to Acropolis Meat Market, where they could contribute to the revi- to the revitalization of the business areas without disrupting the authenticity of the Sponge Docks. And here are the members, here are the names and business members who have signed it. Mama's Greek Cuisine, Nico's Grill House, Dimitris On The Water, Miconos Restaurant, Spongarama, Costa's Restaurant, Mia's Cafe, Acropolis Greek Taverna, Emmanuel Somas GM, The Limani, Dan Esteban Cigars Inc., Bo- Bossy or Boshy Candy Barrel, uh, Eurasian Lady, Katina's, um, Mini Market, G. Scordas, my favorite store, Merrillena Porpheus, Yusef Bullos, Costa's Restaurant, Vegetable Ivory, Venmar. I can't read this next one. Uh, Candle Boutique, Kathleen Keatsos, Jam Spice Wine Smoothies, Softy The King, National Bakery, Patty Kokinos and Nick Kokinos. Thank you for protecting the historic Sponge Docks and ensuring its legacy for future generations. And that was submitted by Padalise Memesakis. To the honorable, uh, members of the board, as a lifelong resident of Tarpon Springs with property at the Sponge Docks, I am not in favor of unlimited mobile vendors cluttering the Sponge Docks. I do, however, believe that there is a place for a limited number of mobile vendors who can demonstrate that they offer something unique that will enhance the experience at the Sponge Docks. Melly Greek Street Donuts is a specialized vendor that offers a unique product, which does not place them in direct competition with our businesses and enhances the attraction of the area. Melly has a loyal following across the Bay Area and would bring additional visitors to the Sponge Docks. I believe we need to have a pathway for a limited number of vendors like Melly, who add a unique product that enhances Sponge Docks experience. Respectfully, Chris Christopoulos. Are there any other missed emails or comments that you'd like to get out before this board goes into discussion?
Hi, Board of Commissioners. Um, my name is Vasili K. I am a, was a Tarpon resident, went to Tarpon High, been a Tarpon, um, Tarponite. I believe so. I believe that Melly Greek Street Donuts should have the opportunity to be down there. And I can tell you on a few notes that I did hear tonight, uh, mentioned about bees and things like that. I worked at the festival with Irene on the, uh, what was it? Seafood Festival. And we were swarmed by bees for about a day and a half. It was horrible. And we found a, a little bit of a fix to make that work. But it turns out there's somebody in the area that must be housing these bees a little differently than they were supposed to be. So that's why they're coming and attacking that. And yes, it is real honey, real Melly. So I understand that that might be happening and I'm sorry for anybody that might have gotten, um, hurt by it. Um, I don't see why, uh, there's a few things that we mentioned about the bathrooms. How can we house that? How can you even run the food truck without those generators? I picked up those generators with Irene myself as well. Those things are very heavy. Working down there would benefit and give a little bit of a culture background. We, she has something to offer that she's, that other people could have done, but didn't. And so now, if we give that out, the opportunity to be able to be down there, that'd be perfect. She has a good spot. It'll be right on the water. Hopefully, that's what would be beneficial that I think. And, um, on another note, sorry, but the Sponge Docks have been pretty dead. I go down there every single day to pick up my husband for work. And between seven, eight, nine, it's dead and that's sad. And we should be bringing in more people. And I remember when I saw the mayor on the news trying to say, hey, come back into town. The hurricane might have taken us down a little bit, but come back in. Let's bring more people in. So there's a lot more things I'd like to say, but I'm just gonna cap it at that. And, uh, I think everybody else has spoken. Thank you and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan Picanis. I work at Costa's Restaurant as a waitress. There's nothing against Irene. She can rent a building and she can do her lukumades. It doesn't have to be a trailer or rent a building and she could do lukumades down there. Nobody's against her lukumades. She can rent a building. That's all. Nobody's telling her not to do her lukumades. Just rent a building and have her lukumades down there. We don't want the trailer down there. That's all. Nobody's against her lukumades. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiel. Are there any other public comments? Now, you've already spoken, Tanya. I can't- Sir, Tanya, we can't do that, please.
Okay.
Please. Are there any other public comments before we go into discussion with the board? All right, we're now going into discussion with the board. Uh, Commissioner, um, Eisner, your light was on first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do appreciate, well, uh, sorry about that. I do appreciate all of the input. Um, I, I need to clarify a couple of things. I don't think anybody up here wants to use the word inundate the Sponge Docks, uh, with food trucks. Um, I, I don't see that it would be more than a couple that would be allowed um, at the most because you do have to, as I said, you would have to be, um, attracted to a brick-and-mortar location. That's not a park. It's not just an open space. That's not just any old place. I wish we had the blue dots to show how many locations that really is. Um, and the thing that we're all forgetting the most is this is not a permanent thing that we'd be trying. This is a temporary thing to see how it works. We could undo exactly what we just, what, what we could try to do and just see. I've heard comments that no commissioner in the past has ever passed us. Does that make it right? I don't think so. Um, there's nothing wrong with trying something new. I personally think the more venues you have, the more opportunity you have, different people to come. There will be the people that come to your Acropolis. There will be the people that want to stand online for two hours to go to Rusty Bellies. There will be the people Fehellers. Um, but there are also people that need to walk by and just grab a Melly doughnut and, and be very happy, um, to have that. I, I think that's an added attraction. Now, depending if it does get out of hand, we are in control as a board to remove that if it's a problem. But in speaking to the city attorney, we can't make rules so stringent that somebody's gonna say, the way you tailored this, you have made it so that you, you've made it prejudiced that nobody else could go, except Melly doughnuts. And we can't do that. So we kind of, the, the, the best way, which is what I spoke about earlier, is to make it legal and to make it so where we don't get a lawsuit is, A, that we're gonna try to do it as a trial basis, see how it works. Um, B, we have to make it legal, so it has to be open to more than just Melly doughnuts. Um, we don't want to do generators. So somebody would have to make an investment to attract, uh, you know, to install electric. So it would be somebody, you know, whether, whether it's Melly doughnuts or whichever food truck, they would have to, somebody would have to make an investment. Um, it should have to only be affiliated with a brick-and-mortar. Um, that's the biggest thing. And I don't think there are more than, from what I've seen, maybe five or six brick-and-mortar places that would be willing to have the room to put a, you know, a food truck there. Um, it's not good for open lots. We still would have to have a bathroom facility with the brick-and-mortar. So we, you know, so, so nobody could just decide to put it in the old place. There's gonna be no overnight. They have to, you know, pull out every day. Um, I think that they should also have the generator because they may not be there every day. They may have to go to Sunset Beach for a concert or go to another town. Um, they'll need to, they'll need to do both. I, I, I just think it's something that we should try. And, and if it works out and it, it, it helps everybody, that's great. If it's something that is causing major issues, I mean, I, I, I didn't really get too big on the bees. It could have been bee day for all I know. I mean, I don't know why that was like that. I just, I've been around the truck. On every occasion, I've never seen bees. Um, I, I mean, a gentleman earlier spoke about, and he's seen none of us at the Sponge Docks. I'm at the Sponge Docks very often. I'm at the Sponge Docks very often. I see what's going on. I see when we're doing very well, very good business and I see when it's, it's not doing well. We need to attract people there. And there's gonna be all sorts of clientele, whether some of them wanna be, sit down and eat for a hundred or $200. And they're gonna be the people that want a $15, you know, two hot dogs or a couple of Melly doughnuts. And they're fine. We need to have it diversified a little bit so that everybody could be part of the, part of the joy of Tarpon Springs. So that is the route I would be looking to make a motion on. But I'm still willing to listen to what my fellow commissioners wanna do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner Banther, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I wanna thank everyone who's here at, um, at 11 o'clock tonight. I know, I know if I wanna go home, I know you all do as well on both sides. Um, I'll be very honest with you. I, I do not think we as a board, um, and I'm not including staff in this, have handled this very well, um, in the messaging. And I, I, though I'm new to this particular board, I haven't combined seven years up here on the city commission. And based off the public comments I heard, both, both, both pro and con, you know, you would think we're trying to ban, you know, Melly's donuts from Tarpon Springs, which is the last thing anybody wants to do. And while, you know, she has a very good food truck that it's undeniable in my opinion, you know, she, she's, you know, become the poster child, but it's a broader issue. It's for, you know, any food truck that can legally operate. You know, um, I, 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 I don't think after hearing all the comments tonight and the public feedback and listening to staff and thinking about it, I don't think much good, no matter which side of the aisle you're on tonight's gonna happen. We, we can't, you know, dig our head in the sand and say, no food trucks ever. That, that, that's, that, that's just not realistic for, 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 uh, for many reasons. And we can't have a free for all. We do have a cultural identity. And, you know, certain things that, well, I'm not for the government protecting businesses at all costs. We have to preserve, you know, some kind of, you know, stable environment there, especially as it relates to the, uh, to the Sponge Docks. What's before us tonight, and I'm not opposed to voting for it. It is very restrictive. I don't know if it even moves the dial much. I mean, it, you know, again, we talked about there's maybe two or three places in the Sponge Docks. And if you wanna call the bar off Alt 19, the Sponge Docks, that's, that's pushing it. You know, it doesn't really do much for you i- if you want a food truck. And you're still gonna be upset about it if you don't want food trucks because there's more food trucks coming in. So in my personal opinion, I communicated this to the city manager before this meeting, I think this should not have been on the agenda tonight. I think we needed to have more input as, as, as a commission. Because when I look at the room, uh, when I first became a commissioner in 2013, Mayor, 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 Mayor Archie said, when you have a contentious subject, you're gonna piss off half the room. It just is what it is, right? We have to make decisions up here. We can't make everybody happy. But when I'm up here thinking like, no one's gonna leave happy, to me, that tells me this, this, this subject matter ha- has just not been handled very well tonight. And that's on us. That's not on staff. That, that's on the board of commissioners and, and, and our city manager. So I do apologize for that. Um, I'll see what my colleagues have to say. I'm not opposed to going along with what seems to be proposed tonight with this, um, limited approach. Um, but again, I don't think anybody leaves tonight winning, in my personal opinion. The only thing that, you know, came to my mind throughout, throughout all of this was perhaps we do need a different approach for downtown Tarpon Springs and for the Sponge Docks. And that's the feedback I'm getting, you know, that, that, that might be a happy medium. I don't know if that can be negotiated properly at, at 11 o'clock at night. Um, but that's the one new takeaway I have from hearing all the feedback is that one size might, might not fit all. I think we need to have some approach on the Sponge Docks. We can't say no food trucks. You can't just ask the city commission to protect your business like that. But at the same time, can't be a free for all, but I realize the demand for it is not the same in all parts of the city. So I'll see what my colleagues have to say tonight, but I wanna thank each and every one of you for staying this late. I know y'all got jobs and lives, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Uh, Commissioner DiDonato?
Where to start? I would agree with, uh, both commissioners that previously spoke. We need to forward, uh, a couple of questions. I'd like to ask Renee a question and then our attorney. Renee, it, it, it's clear to us because we have the backup. Most of these folks do not. What is the possible estimate that you would say of food trucks that would be allowed under this agreement in, in the Sponge Dock area?
As it's written right now, there would approximately two locations.
How many?
Uh, there's only, you know, two locations really that you could allow a food truck at the docks as this is drafted.
Bring that forward because I don't, I'm not sure everybody understands that. And our, and our attorney, it's my understanding at least that if we do do this, first of all, it's temporary. Uh, so we can assess. But I, I, I still believe that if we run into situations that where we need to make changes, we're allowed to do that.
Absolutely.
During that year. So I, so I, I just wanted everybody to know that I think everybody wants to be fair. I happen to, to maybe agree somewhat. Uh, there, there's an exception obviously here tonight, uh, with Melly's, but, uh, I, I happen to feel strongly that there is a difference between the docks and the downtown. Because I haven't heard one person say, we don't wanna be downtown. I may have missed that, but I haven't heard one person say that. So there's a problem with the docks. And, and if we need more time to look at that, I'm, I'm alright with it.
Vice Mayor? You know, usually I let things pass, but, um, Mr. Salavares's comments were way out of line.
I mean, he's, he's a business owner. I get his frustration. I know.
He said my name, so I'm gonna go ahead and comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. We need to, I need a motion to extend the meeting to 11:20 PM.
So moved.
Ms. Jacobs' roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, so, um, first of all, not knowing the docks, my, my family owned a store on the docks for 70 years. And, um, unless somebody stole my credit card, I've got seven charges since March 1st of restaurants that I ate on the docks. Uh, one with you, which I picked up the check, and one with the city attorney, and I also picked up the check. So I think there's a pattern there. So with that said, well, let's move on. So Irene, I mean, Renee, I mean. All we're hearing is Irene.
It's getting late.
Yeah, so Renee. It's state law that we have to, in some form or fashion, allow food trucks, right?
Yes.
Okay, so when you talk about other commissions that didn't allow food trucks, they didn't, mo- in most cases, they didn't have to operate under state law. We have to allow food trucks in some form or fashion, correct?
That is my understanding of, of the, the state statute, yes. We can't rule them out completely.
So we cannot, we cannot prohibit food trucks in Tarpon. I think that, um, you know, we wanna help the breweries, which allowing them to have food trucks is helpful for their, their business survival up on, on, on Pinellas Avenue. I think you have drafted this, again, going back to our little conversation, I know, I'm, I'm sure you didn't draft it just based on what I said. But I think you accomplished what we discussed in having it drafted that it has a minimal impact on the Sponge Docks. As it's written now, and as all the commissioners have, uh, stated, this can be changed at any time, correct?
Through, through another ordinance amendment, yes.
We just, it all comes back to us. Right, so I think we have accomplished, um, by allowing food trucks in town and not violating state law. And we have narrow, and not we, you have narrowly, have, have drafted this with the Planning and Zoning Board, which I wanna thank them for their hard work. We got a member back there. And, um, so I think you, we've done a really good job here as a city in drafting this that again, has minimal impact on the Sponge Docks as it's written now and as the facts pertain to now. And we're meeting our obligations, so, um, you know, Irene, you should feel very loved. When, regardless of how this vote goes, you had 71 people write in, uh, speaking up. You have to feel good. You feel good? Alright, you should. Okay, and that, that's it for me. So, thank you.
Alright, can we all agree that the CRA or, or the downtown Tarpon Springs is fine with, you know, the way we have it written with the food trucks, with the alcoholic places? The, the way the code's written for the downtown area, the, you know, the trip, where the brewery's at?
It's proposed now?
Yes. Not the Sponge Dock. Yes.
So that just, basically, that would be, you're saying excluding the Sponge Docks?
We're just, we're just.
Okay, gotcha.
I think the mayor's just trying to get consensus.
Understood.
Yes.
Alright, now, the Sponge Docks. We got our two options here, and this is, it's time to make the choice or not, you know? We're either gonna go with the alcohol, attach the food trucks to alcoholic places, or we're gonna see what this locations with no alcohol services and then potentially do a short-term sunset of six months or nine months to see how it goes. This is discussion right now. This is going back, and we're just trying to come up with something.
We don't have to set a timeframe. We can come back and visit this at any given time.
I know, but for hope for these business owners, they, they need to see at some point we're coming back in good faith to say, hey, we got this wrong, or this does look like a carnival up and down the place, or there's only two, three spots taking advantage of this. You, you know what I mean? That we have to reassure these property owners and these landowners that, because I'll tell you, if there's blue dots all over this, it, it won't look good. You, we all agree on that, you know?
I agree with that, but I don't think all those blue dots are legit.
There's a lot of properties, there's a lot of, you know, businesses and the, you know, the frontage is good, but the park, you know, the food truck will have to go on the backside of the buildings that aren't visible. There's, you know, there's water district, working waterfronts, I mean, boatyards and stuff. Uh, you, you know, there, there's a lot of different areas, but what I'm saying is if we can try to review it with no alcoholic service, but do it within six months review, do it within nine months to reassure these business owners, we're not gonna let, you know, we're not gonna let things get out of hand, and if we do see it get out of hand, we know how to protect the docks right away.
Sorry, so are you saying for downtown, you are not to tie it to the alcohol service? Where it's more restrictive? Or is the, because it seems like we wanna be more restrictive on the Sponge Docks, right? Or am I misreading you?
The opposite.
The opposite.
Yeah, we don't have a map of what the sp- of what the downtown area would look if it wasn't attached to non-alcoholic places at the moment, so.
Downtown tied to alcoholic?
Because we're, yeah.
And then you're saying Sponge Docks not tied to alcoholic, or?
Not tied alcoholic, but will be reviewed within six months. What do you think, Ms. Vincent? Tell us.
I mean, that's almost a good thing to do, isn't it? Like making it more strict where we want it, and less strict where we want strict, you know?
Well, we're only gonna get two trucks over there.
Honestly, my suggestion would be to adopt it as is and just remove the Sponge Docks from consideration right now and take another swing at that.
I agree. I think you can't, the way it's written now, you can remove the Sponge Docks completely from the issue, and then we can rewrite that. Doing one, I mean, we'll have to make them separate areas.
So we would revisit the Sponge Docks issue?
We would have to bring you.
Another ordinance, yeah.
Separate ordinance of the Sponge Dock.
If it's written, that would apply to all areas that can have food trucks besides the Sponge Docks.
Right.
Yes.
Sponge Docks, leave it, leave it as it is.
So, you know, looking at the map behind you, the Sponge Docks, the Sponge Docks character district is all of this, and it cuts across, and it does pick up, you know, north, this little section of North Pinellas. So essentially, you, you know, you would cut that out of the district, or out of consideration, just take it out. And then everything else would remain. And I would keep the alcohol restriction in place at this time. And we can revisit it all at another point in time, but I think let's take a baby step. We know the breweries want, and that's, that's a, that's a kind of a do no harm, in my opinion, approach.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm good with that, but I don't, two things I wanna be careful of. I don't want the people that are petitioning against it at the Sponge Docks to think, well, that's good. You know, the city commission is saying nothing on the Sponge Docks. That's not the case. The case is, after hearing all the feedback tonight and listening to staff, we need to dive more into the Sponge Docks. What we have proposed now, that's not gonna work pro or con. But this will work for the rest of the area. You know, are, are we on the same page with that? That's what I think you were proposing, Mayor, correct?
I, I was proposing to open it up to the Sponge Docks and let's see who is gonna actually try to do something on all the properties. I mean, everybody's so worried, but at the same time, let's see what actually, who's gonna put stuff on property within six months and what it's gonna look like.
Tied to alcohol sales or not tied to?
Not tied to alcohol sales. If it's tied to alcohol sales, we got two buildings, big deal.
I understand that. I, my, I mean.
You know, our Sponge Docks are dead, it's, you know.
I have a question for you. Why are we tying it to alcohol in the first place? At, uh, Tarpon Avenue, there's no place that you can not tie it to alcohol. So we could run with this on a trial basis as not tie it to alcohol and have it with, um, the, that you have to be attached to a brick and mortar location.
We can, non-alcoholic across the board?
I mean, that's the way I would see it, see in six months if it's, works out or it doesn't.
Which way are you saying? Because sometimes you all turn away from the mic.
And make sure your lights are on, your mic's on.
Saying is to not use alcohol as a determination. Use a brick and mortar association for both locations, Tarpon Avenue and the Sponge Docks.
I wouldn't disagree, but, um.
And see what we, what we, what we find out in six months. Let's go, go back, go back to your, to your blue dot. We have, okay, the big, the one with the, the non-alcoholic blue dots. Potentially, that's where all these food trucks could go.
Not true. Those are the open spaces.
They're, they are potential. They have not been evaluated for bathroom availability or anything like that, but there's potential space available.
Really make this decision tonight without having?
That's what I'm saying. It's not.
I say, I say we, we go with Renee's, um, recommendation of let's, let's do something for the,
The rest of the special area plan.
Tied to alcohol, so all the breweries have, have it.
Yes.
And you bring back something else for the Sponge Docks.
Revisit the Sponge Docks at another time.
You can bring it back.
I think that's best, Mayor. I, I, I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to what you're proposing, but I'm just worried we're not in a state to properly negotiate that at this hour. That's my thoughts. I'm not opposed to that, but.
I, I mean, I think it's written pretty simple and clear and straightforward. I mean.
Oh, straightforward, I mean, you're, it's not.
You know, how, how people wanna improve the properties all around there, it's gonna be up to them and for them to decide, you know, it's.
But we can't tell from this blue dot map how many are brick and mortar and how many have bathrooms. I don't, can we tell from this map?
No, and, and that was like an impossible task for staff to try to pull together, you know?
Right, but to go with Commissioner Eisner's idea, we need, we do need to get it zeroed down so we know what we're looking at. Because we can't tell from this.
I, I understand, but in six months you'll be able to tell.
I, let me, let me just bring up a, what I think is an obvious point, listening to all of the comments and the number of people that signed a petition. Right now, it doesn't sound like that there's a whole lot of property owners down at the docks that are gonna host anybody.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I mean, I don't even really know what the opportunity is except this theoretical exercise that we have here, so.
If you have three or four people, you're gonna have a lot. If you have three or four people, you're gonna have a lot. Then I'll, I'm, I'm willing if we go six months. Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, six months.
Make a motion.
I'm, I'm happy to make the motion. I'll make the motion with the restrictions that I have, no generator, no overnight, but no alcohol, you know, not alcohol related, only open when the stores open, must be attached to brick and mortar, and no empty lots.
Revisit in six months.
And revisit in six months, thank you.
That's the whole area.
That's, that's the whole. That's everything, yes.
Brick and mortar.
Same thing, and we see where it is in six months and we revisit it.
Can you repeat it one more time, please, just so we... I'm being serious.
No, it's a lot going on.
If I'm confused, they're confused, trust me.
It's a lot.
They're not, they don't have what you said either, Mike.
Yeah, you gotta, I'm not saying I oppose you, you just gotta say it again.
Okay.
Wait, could you start off by saying you moved to approve the ordinance with the following condition?
Can I, can I make the recommended and give it to him?
Please, please do, because-
I know how the ordinance is actually written, so... So the motion would be to approve as drafted with the following amendments, removing the requirement for an alcohol license, adding the requirement for a physical brick and mortar establishment on the property, I'll figure out better wording for that between now and second reading, and requiring a review in six months.
And no empty lots.
Well, that's the brick and mortar.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the brick and mortar requirement.
No generator either.
That's already in there.
Okay.
Say so moved.
All right.
Say so moved.
Second.
It's eleven fifteen, do I know where my brain is?
There are no further comments, thank you all for your patience, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes.
Would you all like to defer the next two ordinances?
Motion to defer, motion to defer, number item thirty-one?
To date certain.
Second.
To, well, it's not, we're not meeting, well, April day ceremonial, so we're what?
The second meeting in April, first reading would be deferred to the next meeting in April.
Why are you doing thirties of two second?
Okay, you want, she's-
The guy's been sitting here all day.
Okay, an applicant, never mind then, yes, let's sit here and do it. I did, I did not realize that.
All right, I apologize.
Yeah, I did not realize that.
All right.
All right, we'll do it quickly.
Uh, we're, we're now on to item thirty, ordinance two zero two five dash zero two, land development code amendment, amending Article Four, Special Regulations, Section five nine point zero zero, docks, piers, and shoreline stabilization structures, first reading, uh, city attorney, can you please read the ordinance title?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Four, Special Regulations, Section fifty-nine, docks, piers, and shoreline stabilization structures, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, construction, publication, and an effective date, that is ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two, read by title only on first reading, the second reading will be April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, city attorney, I need to make a motion to move the meeting to eleven thirty-five PM.
So moved.
Second. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Vincent?
Yes, this is an ordinance amending our code to allow electric service to be placed on docks on vacant land, and it does require, now, a new requirement would be a recorded restrictive covenant to memorialize certain items, certain things that can and cannot happen on the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments? Thank you, uh, we'll now, now go back to the commission and just want to make sure, make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two five dash zero two.
So moved.
Second. There are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes. Item thirty-one, last item of the night is ordinance two zero two five dash zero three, land development code amendment, amending Article Six, Sign Regulations, Section one nine two point zero two, temporary banners, first reading. City attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article eleven, uh, Sign Regulations, Section one nine two point zero two, temporary banners, providing for codification, conflict severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, construction, publication, and effective date, that is ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, read by title only on first reading, second reading is scheduled for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you, the chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance two zero two five dash zero three.
So moved.
Second. There are no further comments or discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes, this now concludes the regular session agenda, we will now go to board and staff comments, staff comments, police chief Jeff Young?
I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate and wish Major Mathis well, he's gonna be heading up to the FBI National Academy next week for ten-week in-house school. Uh, it's only one percent of law enforcement executives get chosen for this, so it's quite an honor and prestigious thing, and very proud of Major Mathis.
Congratulations, sir. Uh, city attorney, Mr. Salzman?
Uh, no comments, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, city clerk, Ms. Jacobs?
I just wanted to remind everybody, we do have a CRA's meeting scheduled, so if we do not go through with that, we need to open it up and defer it.
Yes, yes, we will, we will do that right after. Uh, city manager, Mr. Rudd?
Uh, no comments.
Thank you, we will now go to board comments, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, we are super proud of Toreen, thank you for what you're doing, I know that's time away from your family, Derek, we do, we do love you as well, I guess I can ouch you because the public's gone, right? So thank you for protecting us in our meetings and, and some of the humor you provide, um, I have some issues with how tonight was handled, no fault of any one person, but I will be addressing it with the city manager, we have to have proper agenda management for our time, for, you know, these are very serious things that we talk about, and sometimes a late meeting is unavoidable, um, I think tonight could have been handled differently, and I'll address that with the, with the city manager.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner DiDonato?
I would like to thank all those that did attend, even though they're gone now, maybe they hear this, and I, I want to say that not only is Major Mathis deserving of the FBI Academy, but I'm, I'm, I know he's smart, but I think it's his smile that got him in, I think that's, I think that's what did it. I, uh, a lot of things I could say, but I would, I would agree in what I would ask of, of the mayors, uh, this mayor and the next mayor, and the future mayors, all the mayors, we knew that this was gonna be a long item. And, and I felt really bad for that young girl over there sleeping. And I understand that it was important enough to her mom to be here, so I'm glad she was, and I respect that. But I would ask that we, we have the ability to move it into items, and I, I think something like that, if in the future, we should look at making it earlier as opposed to keeping it up to eleven, that, that's, I agree with that, David.
Commissioner Eisner?
Well, first I want to congratulate Toreen, I, we'll, we'll be painfully with the silence of not hearing you for a while, but I know you'll do the right thing, and I congratulate you, you will be sorely missed. The second thing I do want to say is, I do want to thank the residents, I know it was a low turnout, but I, I do appreciate the confidence that they've instilled in my integrity and honesty in me here, um, trying to, to make Tarpon better than we found it, and I just want to thank you all for having that confidence in me, and I, I will not let you down, so thank you very much, and that's pretty much it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner, Vice Mayor Colianis?
Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
So, um, Toreen is, uh, look, he went from a cops and kids kid to the FBI. That's, that was my, uh, Clarice. That was my Clarice imitation, all the way to the FBI. So, you know, you guys are gonna have to get used to, I, I have no original thoughts of my own, they all come from, from movies.
Movie, yeah.
So, you know. But anyways, so congratulations, and, um, Mayor, you know, we're gonna have time on the eighth to, uh, throw some more accolades at you, but, um, you know, you stepped up these, was not normal times, and you handled these meetings really well.
Thank you, sir.
And I learned a lot, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be at a huge advantage because I'm gonna have two former mayors sitting as commissioners when I'm mayor, so that's gonna be really cool, and, um, so I'm excited about that, and I, I'm gonna take exception to, uh, the, the two commissioners on the end, I, I think this went well, I think, I, I think it went well, I think it, you know, governing is messy, and we're gonna have these kind of messy meetings, but we came to, uh, we, you know, what I loved about it was, we figured out how to come together and agree on something. And, um, it's not always gonna happen, but whenever we can, I think it's healthy, whenever we can get to, you know, five oh votes on things and come to agreements, I think it's the best thing for the community. So, um, Commissioner Eisner, you did a, a good job of helping us get the kitty cats together and figure it out, so, um, no, I, I, I'm, I was happy with it, we got us, we came, we came to some conclusion, and, and, and I think we did the best we could for both the business owners and for the, any, uh, small amount of food trucks that may be located there, so, anyways, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, first, I, I do, they, they asked me to, so I would recognize them, I would recognize the Tarpon Springs High School, uh, social media platform, they're ranked number one in the state, it's a good way to promote young kids and, and everything, so let's give them a hat, big round of applause, um, uh, I do want to, I know I didn't do it last time, but it did slip my head, I, I know during the election I'd gotten a little bit critical of us, some of us board members up here, and, and I know that's not the most professional and, um, uh, caring way for us to look forward to take care of one another, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm a competitor to, to, and, uh, just, you know, really wanted the best for our town, so, um, please find it within yourselves to, to find that sincerity and, you know, um, some of my comments that were made publicly, and, um, just my, my last day as a, you know, regular session meeting as mayor, it's been an honor, it's been, it's been nothing short but a, a cool dream, and, you know, I lived every last day like it was gonna be my last, and, uh, I really appreciate it all, and, you know, you guys helped me so much and, and give me an opportunity, and, um, we're very fair in, in how we ran the meetings, and, and, you know, that's, that's something we need, I need to be able to reciprocate to you, because it's, you know, your job's gonna be to handle all of us and our personalities, and, and, you know, um, I need to have a better, calmer personality when I'm on the side right there too, so, um, I do try to take all that in consideration, you know, and, uh, it's been an honor, and I know we'll be able to talk about it more, and, and I've been very thankful that, you know, being on my birthday, it could, could end like this, and I just, uh, it, it's been a blessing, so I just want to thank you all, and with that said, the meeting is adjourned at eleven twenty-seven, but we will have to open up the CRA meeting to, uh, defer to another date, so meeting adjourned at eleven twenty-eight. I just wait for him to, okay. I now call to order the special session agenda for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, at eleven thirty-one PM, Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Commissioner Culias?
Here.
Sorry, Chair Culias?
Here.
Vice Chair Colianis?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
All right, and now we are going to agenda item one, which is the CRA annual report, I would like to make a motion to defer, uh, item one, the CRA annual report, to a month from now?
Mayor, we can, we can put the copy of that in your mailbox if you prefer, we don't, there's no requirement to present it.
That would be lovely.
We can put it in your mailbox, because we have, we have some other agenda items next month that we'll, we'll need the time.
Sure, so we just call it defer, or?
Motion to defer and put it in the mailbox.
There you go.
Okay.
Second.
No further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes, and this concludes the special session agenda, we will now go to board and staff comments, staff comments, police chief?
No comments.
City attorney?
Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir. Uh, city clerk?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you, city manager?
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Board comments, Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner DiDonato? Thank you, Commissioner Eisner?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Colianis?
Wait a minute, I have, I have a comment, uh, I, I looked on my calendar and, and my birthday is on a commission meeting, so you need to remind my cousin Feeley to bring me a cake.
He gonna bring you a cake, that's right, he sure is, uh, just want to thank everybody for the birthday wish, it's probably one of the best birthdays I've had with so many friends and family, so with that said, thank you so much, uh, this concludes the special session agenda, meeting adjourned at eleven thirty-three PM.